Councilor Braithwaite was complaining about the temperatures, so we're just turning it up at the moment.
And on that note, we call the meeting to order. Perfect, yes. Welcome, everybody, and it's our committee of the whole meeting tonight, and we have a agenda in front of us. Before we start, I'm just going to acknowledge that we are holding this meeting on the traditional territories of the Coast and Straits Tallysh people, specifically recognized Lakuanan-speaking people known today as the Squamult and Songhees First Nations, and that their historic connections to these lands do continue to this day. And we also want to note that these, this meeting is being livestreamed and will be recorded and archived for future viewing. So if you're speaking, you will be recorded. And with that, we'll get underway. First thing on the agenda, we have parks, recreation, and culture items. I have Mr. Herman and Mr. Holding here from the Parks, Recreation, and Culture and the Commission for such. Would you like to give a quick overview of the items on the agenda?
Sure, Your Worship, thank you. You have minutes from two meetings before you, just the way timing was around the holiday season. So the Wednesday meeting, or pardon me, the December 5th meeting, is typically the commission's a short meeting and then a social afterwards, so there is not a lot on the agenda, just the typical monthly reports. Nothing out of the ordinary. Then the January 2nd meeting, being the first meeting of the year, there was welcome by the mayor in typical fashion. There were also elections for the Chair and Vice Chair. Mr. Holding was elected as Chair once again, and Stuart Culbertson was elected as the Vice Chair. There was a delegation, the Arts Laureate Barbara Adams was was at the meeting and gave her annual report on how previous activities in the year had gone with respect to the Arts Alive program and plans for 2019. There was also discussion about the commission's strategic framework report that they've been working on since July, and you'll see resolutions there that they asked that that document be forwarded to council for its perusal and and other than that, the monthly reports that typically come forward, and that was it.
Okay, thank you very much. The recommendation here is to obviously, we receive the minutes typically, and that portion of the priorities, strategic plan priorities from the commission is really just looking to be forwarded to the strategic planning process on February 13th for consideration there as part of our piece. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're not approving the plan or anything of that nature. We're just just looking to forward it to that priority session.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there questions of the committee for Mr. Herman, Mr. Holding, or we also have Ms. Adams in the audience here as well? If there's any questions on that report as well. Ms. Green, Councilor Green.
Thank you very much, and through you, Chair, thank you, Mr. Holding and Mr. Herman for coming tonight. A very comprehensive strategic plan. And I just wanted to ask a couple of questions on the urban forest strategy, the status. It says implementation. I'm sorry, let me just go to that. On on the chart, the chart on beginning on page six? Yes. It just says urban forest strategy complete implementation, and I just wondered if we had any timelines in mind about when that might be completed?
Through the Chair, the urban forest strategy actually had quite a lengthy timeline that was meant to provide direction for the next fifteen to twenty years, I believe. So the, obviously, the strategy itself has been adopted, and implementation, the Phase One of an implementation plan was brought forward to council and approved, I want to say, a year and a half ago, something like that. So staff have been bringing forward, so for instance, requests for additional funding that were approved in that implementation plan come forward at each budget request and budget presentation, so as far as an end date for the implementation, I'm not sure that there ever will be an end date. Certainly, we may get to the point where a number of those recommendations are addressed, but I think from a staff perspective, we're going to be working towards enhancing the urban forest for a long time, and I'm not sure if we'd ever say that we're done.
So through you, Chair, we can bring this back periodically just to get an update from you on it. Would that be appropriate? I'm sorry, I've been away, so away for four years and not that familiar with the implementation aspects. But I know that the urban forest strategy and the urban forest canopy are big issues for our citizens here in Oak Bay. So I just wanted to to get some idea of where it is, I guess. That was the, that was the purpose of the question.
Sure, and through the Chair, I think, actually, it's a good idea that maybe we should bring forward an annual review or report on activities in the past year and where we're at in the plan, so I'll make note of that.
That would be great, thank you. And just one other one other suggestion. I was just thinking, on the chart for your strat plan, it would be really helpful to have some timeframes for each of the initiatives, if that was possible, where it's possible, and also to have an, some some idea of who the lead staff might be on some of these projects. It's always helpful to have a contact just for council, and those are just a couple of suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Green. Just for clarity, you're talking about the ten priorities in the strategic plan that's in the piece?
Yes, the objectives and strategies, and then they list as initiative and action. And I'm just suggesting, sometimes it's helpful to add a column, timeframe, expected timeframe, or anticipated timeframe, and who the staff lead might be, or team, just for information.
Okay, thank you. And just to be clear, those aren't adopted yet, so they're not, at this point, at staff's hands to make those pieces. I think what's coming to us is, and correct me if I'm wrong here, at the strategic priorities, we've asked that we include ask like the costing of some of these pieces to come, so that we're making our decisions with the cost, not just, so I believe that aspect will be coming to strategic priorities, but no other aspect of that, in terms of timelines or things of that nature. I can, Ms. Varela, maybe, or I'm sure you'd ask that question of, to confirm that.
Thank you, Your Worship. So for the February 13th, we will actually be bringing forward in a Gantt-style chart some proposed timelines, who the project lead would be, and some order of magnitude costing, if it's available at that time. If council goes as far as to refer the initiative to estimates meetings, staff will do more robust legwork on the costing and that sort of thing, if it makes that benchmark.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Varela. Sorry, any other questions or comments from Councilor Patterson?
Thank you, Chair, through you, and congratulations to the commission and Mr. Herman for pulling this together. I think the it's very nice to see the commission come forward with strategic priorities that can then be incorporated with what council wants to do, because sometimes councils have had a very long list of items, so it's nice to know what other people in the community, the committees and commissions and all of our staff are doing so that we don't have to include them in everything that we consider. But just one item on here, I went through it and I thought, yeah, I know what these are, but there was one that I had questions asked of me, and I thought, maybe I'm not so clear. So through you, Chair, just number seven, it says, ensure all our facilities, natural or built, are open and accessible while not compromising integrity. I took that to mean open and accessible to perhaps individuals that had physical disabilities or whatnot, and just wanting to confirm that that is, in fact, what is intended.
Mr. Holding?
Yes. Yeah, that's correct, that those are people who have disabilities and wheelchairs and whatnot. So that's the accessibility part of it, for sure.
Thank you. Councilor Patterson?
Just a little follow-up, and we may get more into this as we get involved in strategic priorities, but just wondering, some of the ideas that are captured of ways to do that, because I'm sure there's physically challenged individuals, visually impaired individuals, a number of things, so be interesting to hear some of the ideas that go along with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Zelka?
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to ask a question about process to start. I'd see that we have two motions to look at. One is focusing specifically on possible referral of this Oak Bay Parks, Recreation, and Culture plan, and then maybe a discussion of the minutes after that. So is it possible to speak first to the priorities? The strategic plan, and then maybe have a separate discussion about the minutes?
Sure, I've left it open at this point for anybody to speak to anything you wish, so I think, I think we want to get all the questions out on the table right now, and then if we can call people forward to answer as we need to.
That would be great. So with respect to the strategic plan, I noticed that one of the goals, number two, is to protect and value Oak Bay's natural ecosystems, and I'm very pleased to see that in there. And I know Parks, Recreation, and Culture sometimes isn't the only one, the only sort of committee or commission that we have that's sort of looking at ecosystems, or looking at maybe, some people might consider streetscape ecosystems, or the trees within within a streetscape could be potentially part of that. I wanted to sort of just ask a general question through you, through, to the, to the honorable gentleman here at the table. How you first saw, or saw, working with the other committees and commissions in Oak Bay, where there was overlapping responsibility with respect to advice and moving forward on certain areas, for example, streetscapes, trees, natural ecosystems, things like that. The thing that brought that forward for me, for example, was the Sealore item that's in the natural ecosystem, which might potentially, depending on where we go with that, might potentially be, may want to refer to other committees and commissions, because they may want to have opinions on those. So how did you see, potentially, us trying to hear the voice of all aspects of Oak Bay?
Button, sorry. Mr. Herman or Mr. Holding, you're welcome to try and address that question of protecting natural ecosystems.
Through the Chair, I think I would answer from a staff perspective, and Mr. Holding may want to answer from a commission member's perspective, but certainly from a staff perspective, not much different than any other issue. Staff try to be cognizant of issues that impact or where feedback is appropriate from other departments. In fact, I know, for instance, right now, the manager of Parks Services is working on a revision to the tree bylaws part of the urban forest strategy implementation, and that's been circulated amongst other departmental, department heads from other departments to ensure that everybody gets to review and comment before something would come forward to commission and council, so with respect to the ecosystem work or virtually any other issue, I think, from a staff perspective, it would be the same. I'm not entirely sure what if the commission, through the development of this document, talked about interfacing with other commissions and committees, I'll leave that for Mr. Holding.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, with small staff and small budgets, I sometimes I have to question whether it's our responsibility, and I guess ultimately it is, to make sure that every item has all the different lenses applied. And I wasn't quite sure, with respect to Parks, Recreation, and Culture, whether you would be pulling in some of the other lenses, some of the other voices from the other committees and commissions and departments and staff members for items that are essentially are within your bailiwick, but actually do touch in other areas. And where it becomes difficult for me, for example, is in heritage, because heritage touched so many things and has such a broad definition. So that's, that was just maybe more of a general comment. I don't really want to put you on the spot, but it is an open question for me, how we sometimes manage that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Zelka. Any other questions, comments? If not, we're looking for motions here. And I'll invite the public up to speak as well, if there's some point.
I think, if I may, according to what Councilor Zelka was talking about before, we're going to do this in two separate motions.
Sure.
So we can do the strategic priorities, or the strategic plan one first, and then perhaps go on to discuss the minutes, because I think there's some other discussion that wants to come around there.
Let's deal with that first, then, let's touch on the strategic priorities.
I'll make the motion of the commission's strategic plan, including its priorities, et cetera, go to the upcoming 2019-2023 strategic planning and budget process.
Second.
Moving seconded. I'm going to invite anybody from the public who wishes to come and speak to the to that, to the strategic priorities of the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Commission. Anybody who wishes to come forward and speak to that particular issue? I see someone coming. Nope. Ms. Butler, are you coming forward to speak to the? Have a seat. Just give your name and municipality, and then we can, you can say whatever you wish. Ms. Butler, can you just say your name for the record, as well as input, enter them. There we go, thank you.
Granite Street in Oak Bay. I'm not clear about your process. And does that mean that the last item on the agenda is now the next item? Because what I wanted to address is one of the draft strategic priorities. Is that appropriate?
No, this is just specifically referring to the Parks and Recreation Culture had their priorities documented that were referring to our
I'll come forward later.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Butler. Okay, so we have that motion on the table. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak to the Parks, Recreation, and Culture strategic priorities? Saying that, I'll bring it back to this table. Is there any further discussion on that piece? Saying that, I'll call the question, all who's in favor, opposed, non-opposed. The second part of that, which is the minutes that we have here for adoption, or sorry, receiving.
So perhaps I can, through you, Chair, just, I know that there's been a lot of letters that have come forward in regards to the Sealore statue that is being proposed for the the Bay Area, right beside the Marina, and I'm just wondering, Mr. Herman, if you can perhaps let us know the process through Parks, Recreation, and Culture that this would be the next step if this, if approval was given by the province to utilize the proposed rock for this proposed sculpture.
Mr. Herman?
Your Worship, I will try. If I miss any steps or key information, I suspect that folks beside me may chime in. I'm assuming if approval is granted, that there would be a report that comes back to the commission, to the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Commission for some final adoption of the initiative moving forward, which would, or a recommendation to council to do so. And then that would come through the normal process of the minutes to the committee, the whole, and then council would would make a final decision. But given a previous resolution by council, I'm not sure what that would look like, to be quite honest. I would refer that part of the question to perhaps Mr. Jones or Ms. Varela.
Yeah, props, a little bit of clarification on the process for the approval of the art itself, which I believe is done entirely within the realm of the Arts Committee and the approval of the location of public art in general, and in this case, which is a bit of an anomaly, in that it's not on municipal land like most of them are, so. Mr. Jones?
Your Worship, I'll add my two bits on this. So the proposed locations of the two locations are actually on provincial land, even though they're in the water. So what council did on May 22nd in 2018 was agree that one of these two locations would be acceptable to council, and we have written to to advise that those two locations would be appropriate from council's perspective, and that was the decision that was made by council, sorry, at the May 22nd Committee, the whole, and in the council meeting following.
Councilor Braithwaite?
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Jones. I think, in my recollection, and perhaps I think there's only four of us that are sitting around the table now, that were sitting around the table then. My understanding was that we were giving agreement in principle to those two locations, but not necessarily agreeing on the next step, which would be the actual piece of art that in its current in its current rendition on that piece of rock. That was my understanding, that was just one step, just so that we were able to get a letter out to the to the province to seek permission, to see if we could go to that one step further.
So, Your Worship, I think at the time, what council was saying to the province was that these two locations, from the council's perspective, were okay for the location of the art. And as far as what it looks like, that's kind of beyond my bailiwick. But that's what council was asked at that time, and council said, you know what, we would prefer this one location as number one, and we had a second location, and that's the communication that we've made to the province.
Okay, I'll get, Mr. Braithwaite, or Councilor Braithwaite, continue, and I'll get to you, Councilor Green.
So that's, so being that as it is, I think that as long as, I think because of what we've heard from the public in the last little while, since this became kind of public knowledge, I think that what the public is really looking for is the opportunity to give a little bit of feedback to that. And so I'm wondering, and based on what Mr. Herman has said, that it would probably go to commission first, which there's an opportunity for public participation at commission, and then commission would this is assuming that the province gives us permission to put something on that rock. And if commission then sends it forward to council, then again, there should be the opportunity at committee, the whole, for public participation once again at this table as well. I mean, I'm just wanting to clarify, that's the questions that I've heard from the public, is that they would like the opportunity to have, whether they're for or against having something like this put in on this rock. They're looking for that opportunity for that for that participation, and I think that it might behoove us to take a step back when we're hearing so many comments from the public, and just putting the brakes on just for a moment, just to be able to get that public input into this decision. That's all. I mean, I just think it's, it would be wise for us to do that. That would be my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Council, Mr. Jones, just clarification on that, because the process was outlined by Mr. Herman, but I'm not sure we're entirely clear on what that would look like.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. You know what, if council were wanting a bit more information on this, we'd be happy to come back to you and say, here's what's happened up to date, and here is the process that's proposed for the future, and bring all of council up to speed on that, if that were the will of council.
Okay, thank you. I think that would be also helpful for the public to have all that information in one spot as well, so we understand that process. Councilor Braithwaite?
Yeah, sorry, lastly, I'd just like to say, I think that's a very agreeable to me, because I think that, you know, if we're going to have something there, we want, it's going to be there for a very, very, very long time, and I want to make sure it's the right thing that we want to have there, and I want to make sure that the public is behind us putting something there, so.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Green?
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Councilor Braithwaite. That sort of leads into my email today that I sent to all of you and to Mr. Jones, just to bring this to his attention. We have received a lot of feedback in the last few days via email, and there is probably concern about the location, and some of those are respecting the fact that it is a bird sanctuary, that the rock in question is used by wildlife, explicitly herons, I gather, as a roosting area. And there are a number of concerns, and I think my two questions were, one, can we revisit the process for public input, because I think that would be helpful for the public at this point, as Councilor Braithwaite has pointed out. And I do support the Arts Alive program, but it is about public art installation, which implies a public voice in citing and location. Not particularly in what the art piece looks like, because that's a very personal, sometimes emotional issue, but I would like us to revisit the process in terms of having public input.
Thank you, Councilor Green. Counselor, or Councilor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you so much to my colleagues as well. I'd like to echo many of those statements. I, while I was the only counselor that voted against the locating the Sealore installation in a waterlot, I'd be willing to maintain an open mind and certainly look at it. Again, once the actual art piece was chosen, unfortunately, at the time, it was really, I felt we were only being asked for the location, not really having a full view or a full indication of what was, what was going to actually be done at the time. And I understood that was specifically to get paperwork in for the province, so I have to agree with the way it was what I believed and how it was presented to me. So I would definitely look forward to staff returning this to council at some point for the public having an opportunity to speak to it, and for us to have one last kick at the can, so we say, with respect to providing final approval, once we've actually had all the details with respect to not only the location, but also what it will look like. So if that could be arranged, or I don't know whether a vote is needed to this, or whether there's a general assent provided, or I'll leave that with you, Chair. Thank you.
I think it'd be appropriate to actually have a motion to direct staff, because we're asking them to do work and bring back information, if that's the case, but before we get to that motion, I think, and that's an appropriate motion, I wouldn't actually mind, is Ms. Adams is here, she probably has a bit more insight into some of the expected process, if she has anything she would like to add. I think it's only fair to invite her up here to speak. Would you do you have anything to add in terms of what your thinking on the process is? Just come sit down and just, again, put your name and the Arts Laureate.
The process, as the Public Art Advisory Committee is a volunteer committee, and it's our job to try, and what we've been trying to do is to try and build a legacy of pub, public art in the community. The community's been very responsive, as you know. And what, the way it works is we, in the for Arts Alive, is that businesses sponsor each artist. The pieces come up for one year. The community votes on their favorite piece. The favorite piece, if it is deemed to be able to withstand our weather, et cetera, if it's good enough to be permanent, then it would be brought to council. The Sealore part is a totally different thing. The Sealore is a donor has come forward. The donor has come forward to, and he would like to leave something for Oak Bay, because he has lived here for thirty or forty years and has loved the community. And he, and he just wanted to have something of enjoyment to leave for the community, and he wanted a piece of art, and so the project came to the Public Art Advisory Committee, and we have worked through the process. Because he's ninety-six, he was we felt that there was some urgency, so we, and the donor would really like something on the on the walkway, and he would, his objective is, when you walk by, that'll bring a smile to your face. It's, he wants to give some enjoyment. This is not a monument or something. This is not a monument or something like that of a serious nature. He wanted to give something with some whimsy. And he's put up a lot of money if Oak Bay wants it. And so, we did do the call and the application at the same time, simply because the man, the donor, is elderly. Now, we are not going to take any further steps until we have chosen a piece of art, and we have had lots of input in choosing that. People from the art gallery have been on, come in, and we've had lots of consultation. We've had consultation from parks, and we've had other staff consultation as well. And so, it's a process that I understand will work itself out. But there will be no further movement on the sculpture until we find out whether or not the rock, we are going to be able to have the license to occupy of the rock.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Just for clarification purposes, maybe you can answer this question as well. There's the rock out in the bay, and there's also just the rock on shore, the shoreline rock.
The rock closer to shore, we haven't asked specifically for that one, because you have to ask one at a time.
So, there's the one that's actually the shoreline, is that correct?
Yeah, it's on the shoreline, and it actually, I'm not sure if that's a provincial rock or a municipal rock myself. And the one in the water is a provincial rock.
Right.
And that's the one that we have requested, applied for the license to occupy.
Right.
And the sculpture that is so far been chosen, I think, fits the theme and fits the rock. It doesn't take up the whole rock.
Okay. I think we'll get to that if we want to have that process. Can we just, sorry, one last question. From your public art committee perspective, is there any other point that you would take any other public input? It's usually sort of, you're doing the work as a committee, that's not usually any aspect that you would handle as a committee, is that correct?
Well, what we do is we have the submissions come in for Arts Alive, and we choose 10 or 12 or 13, depending on how many sponsorships we receive from businesses. And those pieces are all, have some artistic merit and are able to be outside. So, the choosing of that is the public's choice.
In this case, though, there's no other pieces.
In this case, when it's a donation like this, we have endeavored to include other people besides those on the committee. But those on the committee, there are two people from, there are seven people on it, there are two business people, two practicing artists, two people from the general community, and myself. So, it is a representative committee.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Braithwaite?
And I will say that, last week, Ms. Adams did have the artist and the sculpture out at one of the apartment buildings across the street from where the proposed location is, and so that gave them an opportunity to have a look at it and have some discussion as well. So, that's a little bit more of a public input, too.
You have to, if you want to speak, you have to come to the microphone and sit down, Ms. Adams.
When we, yes, we have no intention of, you know, just not including the public with this. Our meeting at the Red Yard Kipling was a well-rounded meeting, and we had a lot of people for it. We had some people who don't want anything on the seashore, and, you know, the sculpture is the sculpture, and right now, it's this tall, and it's made from clay, and, you know, I think that it matches the theme, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, so we're going to really try and take this step, what process council would like to see for consideration of this. I'm looking for the council for some wisdom and some emotion here, if you're looking for it, and we'll have the public input as well.
So, should we have a motion to perhaps do what we talked about before and get staff to perhaps get a little bit more information on the process?
So, this would be a request to bring back to the next committee of the whole meeting, this issue back again with all the supporting documentation is probably the best way of putting that. Is that a fair motion? I'm getting a nod from Mr. Jones, I'll take that as a yes. Counselor Appleton?
Can I make a request, that if we're going to direct staff in that way, that we go, and I'm in concurrence with my colleagues on this, I'd like to see us go beyond just sort of the idea of public consultation. I would like to see when that information comes back through you, Chair, a question of staff, whether or not we can have confirmation that provincial approval for the site also includes a consideration of the environmental impacts to the site, and also whether or not First Nations have been consulted on the sighting, because those two components, I feel, are critical, in addition to the public component.
Thank you, Counselor Appleton. Counselor Zelka?
Thank you. If I may just inquire, one of the concerns that I might have, that I would hope at some point would be answered, would be if there would be potentially additional maintenance costs because of the location and potentially the extra wear and tear with respect to storms and those sorts of things. I don't know whether we actually have the funds or whether we're potentially committing ourselves to additional funds, I don't know, for a situation like this that is in an area that's outside of the norm. So, I'm not sure staff can actually answer that, but that certainly would be one of the concerns I would have.
Money, there's been money allocated, but.
Yeah, I think that, through you, Chair, that the $50,000 was put forward for the statue, and then an additional amount of money was put forward for the maintenance. It's a lot.
So, I think, but I think in caution, because if we're asking staff to go away and do any really meaningful assessment of, is it enough, is a pretty big ask, right? It's, I think that's a, yeah, fair enough. Counselor Green?
Yes, just a question through you, Chair, to staff. Maintenance for that rock, so I'm assuming we would need a boat to get out to the rock to do the maintenance, is that correct? Or is the rock a dry rock at some point, depending on tides?
Your worship, most likely, you would probably need some type of a structure to, if you're doing maintenance, to allow you to do that.
Thank you.
Or a bathing suit, yeah, an official municipal bathing suit, sounds reasonable, course of action. Okay, so, do we have a motion captured here? Just, we have some general direction, and I would echo Counselor Appleton's just clarification. Now, I thought I did hear Ms. Adams, do you have some answer to that question about the environmental and the First Nations consultation process?
Thank you. Yes, I do. This process has gone on for a little, for a while, and.
So, do you mind turning that microphone just a bit more towards your most.
Yes, thank you. When we, we didn't know anything about trying to put something on a rock, so we have had consultation with Murray Rankin with the federal government, and he consulted with the federal fisheries, and we've had some contact with Andrew Weaver, and he has helped us get our application put forward. And there will be consultation for any license to occupy. There is a consultation process, which we have started with the First Nations, but we haven't, not specifically just saying that we're kind of interested in this, nothing, you know, definite, because there's no point in asking a question if we don't, if we're not necessarily going to get the rock anyway. The federal government, what they're interested in is a copy of the base. We are going to use the rock, we are not touching the seafloor. It'll just be on top of the rock, and we have had an engineer draw up a plan so that the concrete that will be the core of this bronze sculpture will be contained and will be of bridge grade, seawater grade. So, and that's what the federal government wants to know, whether or not there's going to be any leakage or any contamination from this. And so, the engineer has said what we have to do to mitigate that problem.
We're probably going to more details than we need to at this point. No, that's great. I think the question there will be more on the consultation. Could we just, is staff okay to read back what the motion is, just so we're all clear on what it is that we're talking about?
Your worship, so the recommendation would be that staff bring back a report to the committee of the whole, bringing, sorry. Ms. Varela wrote it very better than I did. That staff be directed to bring back a report to an upcoming committee of the whole regarding the sea lure art project that includes, but is not necessarily limited to, public consultation to date, First Nations consultation, environmental impact, and any future maintenance costs.
That sounded good. Getting nods around the table, sounds good. We do need to just, any other questions from council, but we need to just invite the public here to come forward and speak as well. So, is there anybody from the public who wishes to come forward and speak to this item at this time? I don't see anybody, so we have it back to this table. Any further discussion on the motion? Was that a? No, okay, okay.
Do you have a second, or I'm sorry, I'll second it if you don't.
Okay, thank you, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, call the question, all those in favor, opposed, not opposed, thank you very much. The, we still have to receive the minutes, or any other items on the minutes, yes? Counselor Green?
Yeah, in the report by the Arts Laureate, there's the issue around the performance space down at Turkey Head, through you, Mayor, to staff, I guess, perhaps, the laureate. And I'm just wondering, in the report, it's made a request that we keep this in our to-do list, and I'm just wondering if perhaps staff could provide an update on, I know they've been waiting for some time to complete that project, and whether you could update us on the status of that, and perhaps any projected timelines for completion. Yeah, what I'm talking about is item two in the Arts Laureate's report.
Right, the performance space around the sea, LSC. Mr. Jones or Mr. Herman?
So, your worship, from staff's perspective, this would be something we are planning to bring forward to strategic priorities, the lease for the Oak Bay Marina and the parking lot, which is included in that, expires in 2022. So, we'll be having a conversation with council about how you want to proceed with that, and we would think if there are additional activities or things that council might want to include in that process or on those sites, that that would be part of the broader RFP process that we might go through, or the lease conversations that we will have in the future.
Thank you, and just one other very kind of quick question, this is more out of curiosity. I noticed that the Sketch Club received $8,000 grant. Who did that come from? On item three in the Arts Laureate report.
We'll invite Ms. Adams to come back to the microphone and answer that question. And thank you for coming tonight, this helps clarify a lot of information upfront, thank you.
I have to press that. My pleasure. The $8,000 grant came from the CRD, and it's part of other piece of money that we're going to be working on putting a mural on the back of the building. And, but it was, it was applied for, with the Sketch Club, and Glenna was putting this together, which we are now moving forward on.
Now that I have your attention, though, I was just curious, how are they, we're talking about consultation of art and whatnot, how will it be decided what goes on in the mural wall? It's a great place to put a mural, but how will that process?
Well, we're working on that, and public participation is really important, and I'm just, we've, we're one of two ways in doing this. One of the ways was we were going to ask for, in fact, I think this is what we'll be doing, we're going to get a, make a, an ideas book, an inspiration book from the public. We're going to put the idea out to the public, what would you like to see on the back of the wall, on the wall? What are your, what do you think would be good? We are going to put that inspiration book, so we're going to compile, take all the ideas. We're going to take the inspiration book, and when we do our call for artists, they're going to, that will be included to the artist, so that the mural concept is going to come out of some ideas right from the public, so.
Yeah, I know there was one time when we were talking about the young people at the high school being involved in it, but it sounds like you're going to put a call out to professionals.
Well, the high school doesn't want to do it.
Finally, I just want to thank you for your report. It's very clear, you've been very busy over the last year with all the items on here, so thank you again very much for all the work you do.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Green, thank you, Ms. Adams. Any other pieces, otherwise we're looking for a motion, well, we can take a motion to receive the minutes? I don't think so, we just had the motion to.
Make a motion to receive the minute?
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Anybody from the public wish to speak to the minutes themselves? Seeing none, before I call the question, I just want to also remind everybody in the audience and watching at home, tomorrow, from 6:00 to 9:00, there is an open house, I guess what we call it, for the Carnarvon Master Plan, so a review of that at Monterey Centre, I believe it is being held, so 6:00 to 9:00 PM. So, anybody who is interested in what's happening and the proposed options for Carnarvon Park should go to that event tomorrow night. With that, I'll call the question, all those in favor, opposed, not opposed, thank you very much. That concludes our, phew, item number one on this agenda. We'll have to move a little faster than this as we go forward, I hope. Item number two, we're into the land use applications, and we have three items on the agenda tonight, before we get into our strategic planning process. Item number one is the Upland Siting and Design for 2895 Beach Drive. I'll hand this over to either Ms. Jensen or Mr. Anderson to do a quick overview.
Thank you. This is a triangular property located near Uplands Park. It's bordered by Beach Drive to the north and the Esplanade right of way to the south. The applicant is proposing to replace the existing single-level home with a new two-story home with similar sighting on the lot. The design itself includes shingles for cladding, a gambrel roof, front entry columns, and interlocking pavers for the driveway. The advisory design panel reviewed the application, was generally supportive. They did recommend some changes related to the base of both the house and the front entry columns, and those have been incorporated into the design. They also suggested using metal or wood railings instead of glass railings to better reflect the design of the home, and the applicant has replaced those with a black metal picket. Staff have reviewed the application and note that the proposed work meets all the requirements of the RS2 zone, and offers an architectural style that is unique from nearby properties. No trees are proposed for removal, and the proposed 55% tree canopy cover exceeds the 45% targeted by the forest strategy.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. We have, are there any questions of the committee to staff, or the applicant who is here as well, I see in the audience? Or comments? No? All right, just to hang tight to the applicant. Are there any questions or comments from the public who wish to speak to this application? I'm not seeing any, okay, then I'll bring it back to this table, we need a motion, and then we'll have further discussion. Can I just get a motion on the table?
Move the recommendation, second.
The recommendation is to approve. Any further discussion, Counselor Green?
Yes, thank you. As you know, Mayor, I'm the ADP or Advisory Design Panel. Yes, thank you, as you know, Mayor, I'm the ADP or Advisory Design Panel liaison for council, and I attended the meeting where this property was evaluated, and I have to say it was a very comprehensive, complete evaluation, I think I was there for three hours, not just for this application, but for others, it was, it was a very long but interesting meeting. I have to tell you that I have some history with this, with the existing home that is scheduled to be demolished. It belongs to a former premier of British Columbia, his name was Byron Johnson, he built the house and received his building permit in 1949, so there is some history that is attached to this property, I, I agree, it's not on the Heritage Register, it is not a heritage property per se, but it does have a significant history for the province of British Columbia, and I spent many hours there as a very small child, so it, I am sorry to see the house go, I have to, I have to be honest about that. But here are my concerns about the proposal, and I am not an architect, so I admit that upfront, but I'm concerned about the buffering, or lack thereof, between a public space and a new home of this size. The house that's currently on the property is a very low-profile home, it fits into the landscape extremely well because it overlooks the Esplanade, and then it borders Cattle Point, so it is the last house on the right as you're going towards Cattle Point, right at the driveway. It's an unusual lot, triangular in, in shape, and sits directly across from Uplands Park. Because Cattle Point is now designated nationally as an urban star park, I have a concern about the use of dark sky lighting, and I'm hoping, and I know that was certainly stressed with the proponent that, that dark sky lighting be used, because if there is any impeding of, of people being able to enjoy the urban star park at night, that would be a big concern. And so hence, a question for all of us about buffering zones near parkland. So I've mentioned the history, I've mentioned the star park, and really, it is important to note that that is a public space and public thoroughfare, and the final point I'll make, and it's just a general one, and I've, I've spoken to planning about it, and it, it's my own personal opinion, we have a marine scenic drive, and it's called that for a reason, it means that from, from the drive, we can see the marine environment. This is, this will be a large home compared to what's there, and, and I know it meets all the regulations and so on, but the other, the other aspect are view corridors, which are important to the public, and I know that those apply only to public spaces or, or public view corridors, but again, if you compare what will be built to the house that's currently there, it, it is a huge change, and, and does, does occlude the view, whether you're driving or walking. So those are my comments, and I do appreciate that the applicant, again, has been very cooperative, and, and the ADP approved the, the proposal, but those, I, I just wanted to give some context to my, my concerns about the proposal, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Green, it's probably worth asking the question if the applicant can come forward, just to answer the question on the lighting, particularly on the park side of that building, if there's efforts made in the current design to minimize the lighting, light pollution into the, what is a light sky designated park. If I could just ask you to just state your name and company and residence, municipal, or municipality of residence or business is fine.
I'm Mark Whitney, I'm with Novus Properties, and I live in Oak Bay. Currently, I don't believe we propose any lighting in the backyard, and the lighting in the side yard and the front landscape will all follow dark sky principles, so downlighting the lower warmer light bulbs, and any sconces will have obscured glass, so it minimizes the spread of light.
Okay, thank you very much. Just might as well wait there in case there's any other questions from the council. Yes, Councilor, breath rate, and then I'll come back to you.
I actually have a question out of curiosity through your chair, why do you have two theater rooms in this plan? There's a theater room on the main floor, and there's a theater room in the basement, I'm just out of curiosity, is that normal?
You don't have to answer this question, but you're, if you want to, you may.
We like movies, so, there's adult movies, children movies.
Yes, say no more, yeah. Councilor Green?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I, I forgot to mention, I have requested through planning a plaque to be placed on the property at the owner's expense to commemorate the site as the home of a former premier of British Columbia. I know that's a, a big ask, but it would be most appreciated, I think, certainly by the Heritage Commission, and certainly by, by the community at large, so that in perpetuity, people will know the significance of the property itself, thank you.
Sure, we, we discuss that with our client, and we're happy to do that, we'll, we'll work with staff to determine the details of that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I would just maybe ask that that request go to Heritage Commission, just to see what, what and if they would like to, to see on that aspect, because there has been, I know, some debate about the recognizing of buildings, post, pre and post and afterwards, and maybe also make an effort to get a, sure we have some good photograph of the existing house as well. Is there another comment or question, Councilor Zalka?
Thank you very much, Chair, through you, I'm not quite sure to whom yet, I have two questions. One has to do with the view corridors, and not just from, from the roadway, but I do notice some, to the, I guess that would be, I guess that would be the direction west is, is Uplands Park, and I'm not quite sure which, which houses would be falling within the notification distance, but I do also know that within the Uplands, there are special, special rules and special regulations we have to follow. So a question through you to staff, with respect to notification to various other Uplands residents, and, and their rights that may or may not be impinged by this higher house, with, because I know what the view corridors in particular are protected by the Oak Bay Special Powers Act. So a question through to you, to, to staff is, what is the distance of notification, please, in this case, being an Uplands property?
I can answer that, there's no notification, it's, it's not a variance, it's just a setting and design, so there's no notification requirement given for these applications.
So it's up to, if I, if I can just ask a question then, so it's up to the, the residents themselves to notice that there's a sign there, and, and they need to pay attention, and if they miss it, they miss it.
Yes, this is quite a long way from any other house on the other side of the street, it's, it's, it goes all the way around past the Senate half and then onto the other piece, so I don't think there's much in the way of direct line of sight to this particular lot, because it's parked directly across the street, but I, it would be in this case up to the residents, the neighbors to, to make note of the, of the sign, and, and come forward with any concerns.
Thank you, and the second question I'll ask, it has to do with whether buildings and, and planning would be looking for any sort of a geotech report, I'm not, the reason I ask this is that I noticed that in, in other Uplands properties that are this close to the, to the water, it was required, and because of the concern of flooding in the basement, or potential seepage, I don't know whether they're going any deeper with respect to what's already there, but I thought I would at least ask the question as to whether any particular report needs to be appended to land titles, because now would be the time to do it if we're going to do it.
I'll turn that over to, to staff, I think is probably the appropriate level, this is, this is quite a high property, but it's, it may still be impacted by the distance. Mr. Anderson, looks like you're the one turning on your microphone.
To my knowledge, we're not asking for that, it would be reviewed at building permit if we determined there was a need for it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we have a motion on the table then, all those in favor, opposed, want to oppose, Councilor Green? With that, it, it gets, essentially this is a recommendation to committee, to council, so at the next meeting, which is next week, it'll come back to council for final approval, that's the way the process works, or so the committee will make recommendation to ourselves to approve. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move on to item number three, which is a development permit application at 2020 Oak Bay Avenue regarding some oning changes and facade changes, so if I could hand this over to staff to give a quick overview?
Yes, this application relates to the form and character of an existing commercial building at 2020 Oak Bay Avenue. The proposal is to update the exterior cladding along the front of the building primarily by replacing the upper portion of the building with corrugated steel and cedar siding. Open aluminum canopy frames will be installed above the doorways to add architectural interest to the building. The advisory design panel was generally supportive of the application, recommending some changes related to long-term building maintenance, soffit material and canopy frames. The applicant has responded to those changes by incorporating cedar into the soffit material and adding additional cross slats to the canopy frames above the doors. Staff have also reviewed the application, the proposed works will update the look of the existing building, and will improve its visual presence to the street. This is an area of Oak Bay Avenue with diverse building styles and ages, and the update to the building will contribute to that mix while keeping with the guidelines outlined within the commercial mixed-use development permit area.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen, and to be clear, this is in front of us because it's a development permit area, there are no variances, are there any other asks as part of this? Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant, is the applicant here? Thank you. Is there any questions of the applicant or of staff on this item? I'm seeing none, so I'll go to the public, is there anybody who wishes to speak to this application in the audience? I'm seeing none, so I'll bring it back to this table, I'll look for a motion, and then we can speak to that motion.
Move the recommendation.
Moved, seconded, thank you. Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, opposed, not opposed, thank you very much. Item number four, the last item before we get to the strategic planning portion, is a development variance permit application at 638 Beach Drive, if I could turn this over to staff again to do it, Ms. Jensen, to do an overview?
Thank you. So there's two aspects to this application, there's the, the variance as part of the development variance permit, and then siding and design, so the, the architectural style of the building. The property itself is located on Beach Drive near Newport Avenue, the applicant is proposing to construct a new single-family home on a sloped lot with extensive landscaping installed across the site. The design itself includes, pardon me, stucco siding and rectangular glass windows on a home that reads as a two-story building from Beach Drive and a single story from the north side. While the home itself is located within the permitted setbacks, the owners are proposing to install a patio and an open frame canopy along the north side of the building. Both the patio and the canopy are considered structures because the patio would be below grade, and they are located within the setback area, so they require variances to the exterior side lot line. The advisory design panel considered this to be a beautiful building and a great example of humanistic design, and recommended approving the proposed development. There was some discussion around expanding the north patio to better flow with the topography, but lot coverage would have been exceeded, so the applicant has chosen to design the patio as presented. Staff have also reviewed the application, the proposed style incorporates elements of the surrounding area while presenting as a modern design. The siding of the patio and the canopy require variances, which is primarily attributable to the slope of the site. They are located near the Strata Road at an elevation significantly lower than nearby homes and have no direct impact on adjacent neighbors. The landscaping provides screening and introduces a large number of native species appropriate for the setting while still retaining trees along Beach Drive.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. The applicant is here, I see, so if, are there any questions of the applicant at this time from the committee? Councilor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor, and through you, you know, in reading this, and I'm grateful that I have attended so many meetings in the past, because at least that way I have, do have some memory of what's gone on. I think just for, for the sake of continuity and transparency, what I would have liked to have seen on this report was that this application that is before us tonight also arises out of an earlier HRA. And as part of that subdivision, if you read back through certainly the Heritage Commission minutes of the application, and even the discussion at council, I think that when the, the Heritage Revitalization Agreement was, was considered, the discussions at the, the council table, the discussions at the Heritage Commission were that there was a belief in going forward with the agreement that there would be also some continuity with the design style, and the McClure home that, that originated this agreement. So I think it's very important that in these processes, we don't lose sight of what we started with and, and how these came about, because it will affect certainly questions, decisions, discussion that take place in future applications that may arise, so I think it's important that that information also be captured in these reports, so that we have a fully informed background into it. And so I'm not sure where the, the design of this building came from in those discussions, and I realize that, in reading through the, the agreement that was finally entered into, that there, there isn't a design constraint on, on the new proposal for this, this home. But the, the Heritage Revitalization Agreement did in fact have a variance already at the time it was considered for this lot, and now it's coming back for another variance. So perhaps if we could have some clarification on staff as to how many times these can go around, can, you know, how many times can these things come back once an agreement is already entered into? Thank you.
I'll, I'll put that to staff, I think there's also the, the question raised about the, well, maybe I'll let you answer that, that question if, if you can.
You're correct, there were some variances included within the Heritage Revitalization Agreement itself, that was aimed more towards the existing heritage home that was on the site, and the, the setback requirements and height requirements and so on that were going to be affected by, by siding the home on essentially a smaller lot. There were also some variances attached to the, the lot area of, of the lots that were being proposed. In other words, those, those four lots were going to read as a, as an RS4 zone rather than RS2 zone. So the agreement itself, those variances really were attributable to the existing heritage home and to the density characteristics of the zone. For each of the individual lots, in terms of coming forward with variances, the, there's, there's nothing in the legislation that would stop somebody from coming back numerous times applying for variances, it's up to council to determine whether they wish to approve those variances or not. It does not impact the HRA, these are now separate, going back to the zone itself.
Okay, thank you, and I think important question was raised about the design controls not being integral, but they are, and under our processes that, under this HRA, this is what we're doing today, so there's, there's the, there's the variance question, which is one question, but there's also the siding and design question, which is the other half of that, and that's why it's here, is that we're going to make a recommendation to council, ourselves, for consideration on Monday, or next Monday, as to whether or not this would get approved. Oh, this is the time and place to talk about that, if there's ever, yes, Councilor, breath rate?
So along those same lines, then, normally when we have a, a clean slate, so to speak, on a piece of property, we, well, I like to think that people can build on a blank slate without having to come for any variances. Is there a limitation because of the, the configuration of this, of this site, that they're coming and asking for such a large variance?
Ms. Jensen?
Yeah, there are two components to the variances that they're asking for, one is the patio itself, because it is a fairly steep sloped site, I, in order to have a level patio area, walkout patio from the main floor, they're having to cut into the site, and so that's making it a below-grade patio. Under the zoning bylaw, that's treated as a structure, so by utilizing their backyard, they're essentially within the setback area and requiring a variance for that patio. If this was not a sloped site, there would be no variance for the patio.
That's the patio in the back.
On the back, correct. The open framed canopy that's also going over that patio area, which is a series of timbers that are running across and over, is an architectural design, treated as part of the building. It in of itself also requires variance, likely not without the same argument as with, with the below-grade patio for the slope.
Thank you.
I'm going to invite the applicant to come to the table, because I think your insight into the design is worthwhile, and, and maybe just as an opening, I think one of the, the initial questions raised by Councilor Patterson around this being a Heritage Revitalization Agreement, having a heritage building, I know that was raised in the original discussion around this, the site, was how do we make sure that the, that, that original building isn't obscured by the, by the new buildings, and, and it still maintains its sort of prominence, and I, I think that would be my question, unless the two-story building in the front can have, can have that effect, so perhaps you can just talk to a little bit about how you see. So perhaps you can just talk to a little bit about how you see this building fitting in within that heritage revitalization context. And just again, your name and municipality for the record.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. My name is Greg DeBant. I'm a principal with Cascadia Architects. We're the designers of this house. I'm here representing Ernie Kumol and Susan Picard, who are the owners of the lot. And they purchased the slot from Abstract Development. So this house is not part of that initial HRA, as you stated. But the design, you know, we did approach the design, obviously, with reference to the requirements of the HRA. And I can speak to that at some length if you like. What I wanted to add initially was that patio on the rear side, I guess it is the north side. Susan has MS and gets around with a walker and a scooter. If the patio was up, I think it's two feet higher, it would not be a variance. It would be meeting natural grade and so they wouldn't require the variance. But of course, for her, that would make it very difficult to get to that patio. So that is the primary reason from their point of view that they're asking for this variance. It does also, and I can, if with your indulgence, take five minutes to talk a bit about the design and how the building was conceived to have some reference and respect to the Boyd House. I did bring along some of the renders.
I think that's appropriate.
Okay. So I hope you all can see, this is basically the site plan. As you probably know, the access road for the two lots that are up behind the Boyd House starts at the original driveway and then curls around behind this house and snakes around the Boyd House.
I just want for those in the audience or those at home looking along, this is the second page of the plans attached to the agenda. So there's nothing new here. It's just on the, what's, if you have the electronic version of the agenda, it's on the page two of the plans portion of this application. So go ahead, Mr. DeBant.
One of the things we noticed looking at the site is that in terms of view lines, the location from which you'll see the new house and the Boyd residence together is from the entrance to the site because there's an existing copse of shore pines and some vegetation through the front of the site. You don't really see the two in context together from below, from Beach Drive, unless you're over here. So we conceived of the house, and of course, we were dealing with this single-level living requirement for the owners as well. We conceived of the house as having two kind of components. The first would be the view, primarily driven by the view that you see from the driveway. And that is to establish this as somewhat of a gatehouse to the site and having some architectural reference to the original Georgian revivalist home. You can see this best in this rendering here. This is the garage for the house. And so you drive up, you come around behind and you enter the garage there. And as I say, we've masked out the trees.
So I'm just getting interrupted again. So just from people at home, pages eight and nine of the plans, if you have a chance to see them, that's what we're looking at here. Go ahead, Mr. DeBant.
We've made the trees in front transparent so you can see the whole house. But the fact is, is that most of this portion, the glass box portion of the house is not visible from the entrance. So with the garage structure, we picked up on some of those Georgian cues, which the Georgian architecture is, especially revivalist Georgian architecture, is very rectilinear. It's box-like, strong horizontal eve lines. And there's sort of a marked symmetry in the design. You can see the triple windows symmetrically arranged on the two faces of the garage that are visible when you're looking at the home. Picking up on the triple windows that are in the home itself and creating this sort of symmetrical, horizontal, rectilinear kind of shape. Then we've clad that component, which almost sits like the base of the house in stucco to match the existing home. So those two read together, we're hoping and planning that the lower house reads, as I say, especially when your focus is that portion of it as a gatehouse to an estate, a Georgian estate. As you come around to the south, obviously, the views open up to the bay and you have some of your adjacency more than the mid-century modernist homes adjacent. That's where we put, you know, the bigger glass windows, taking advantage of the more expansive views and so on. The flip side of that is that the HRA talks about the importance of being respectful to the views of those behind and the privacies of those behind. So from above, we've kept the house very low. In fact, it's almost 10 feet lower than the allowable height in the zone. And we've done that for a couple of reasons. The first is to make sure that as much as possible, our roof line doesn't interfere with the horizon line. So people in the houses behind, and these are the existing houses adjacent, as well as the Boyd residence and the new houses that will be built behind that, will still maintain that sightline to the ocean across the roof of the house. And the idea is that the house basically buries in. One of the things that struck me about the site when we first went to see it was how from those upper houses, especially the Boyd residence, you don't really have a sense of a bunch of other houses in front of you. You're looking down over the landscape towards the water. We wanted this house to sink as much as possible into that vista, into that landscape. And that is part of the reason for this screen and rock wall that sits behind, or the concrete wall, pardon me, that sits behind the house is to mediate that view of the house. So you don't have the impression that you're looking at the backside of a house, but rather you're looking at what will be a mature landscape through here and this kind of mediation visually by the screen to the house. It also, you know, in reverse, provides some privacy for Ernie and Susan, who have the roadway snaking around behind them and will have cars traveling up and down the road behind their house. So it gives them a bit of privacy as well. And again, you know, we've gone to the extent of going with a low-slope metal roof rather than just a membrane roof in order to create a nicer material for the houses behind. So it'll have a bit of shimmer and sheen like a metal roof does, a little bit reminiscent of the light on the water of the ocean as opposed to just, you know, a membrane roof that you see on most flat-roofed houses. So I think, hopefully, that at least gives you some of the design rationale behind the way the house is composed on the site. We had to work with the triangle a lot. We had to work with the fact that it's single-level living and that's what drives the variance. But we also hope that in your experience of the site, this house will, you know, be able to kind of mediate between the modern neighbors, its own, you know, reality as being a brand-new home and some of the heritage cues of the Boyd House. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeBant. Are there questions, further questions of the applicant? Counselor Green?
Through you, Chair, too, Mr. DeBant. Or someone said that this lot was, I'm sorry, maybe to Ms. Jensen. Someone said the lot is outside the HRA, did you say, for this home? Just for clarification. Thank you.
I believe that was the applicant just saying it's a process. But go ahead, Ms. Jensen.
So to clarify, the Heritage revitalization agreement facilitated the four-lot subdivision and designated the heritage home, the Boyd residence, as on the site. It would not necessarily now apply to any future development on the additional three lots. Those are captured in a siding and design covenant, which is why it's in front of you this evening.
Thank you.
Counselor Braithwaite?
So, okay. Just along those lines, because I actually went back and looked at the original HRA agreement as well and looked at the presentation. And one of the things that caught my eye was about the trees. And it said that there's a possible removal of four bylaw-protected arbutus trees in the original HRA. So now what I'm hearing is that that original HRA is now just really on the main house and the other, even though when we agreed to have the four lots in that HRA or the subdivision, and we, I think, I believe as a council, thought that we were agreeing to all of those things that we heard at that time. Now what's being said is that in actual fact, in this particular lot, we don't, because it was sold, it's no longer that they have to follow what we laid out in that original HRA. Is that what I'm hearing or am I hearing that incorrectly?
I'll pass it over to Ms. Jensen.
This is an interesting one to try to wrap your head around. So the HRA is really just that. It is an agreement. And the agreement is setting out certain conditions to facilitate something. That something being that is a balance between benefits attributed to the owner and benefits attributed to the community. So in this particular instance, the agreement varied certain provisions of the zoning bylaw to facilitate that four-lot subdivision. So the benefit to the owner was to get the four-lot subdivision. The benefit to the district was to get the designation and a conservation plan attached to the heritage home that now sits on a lot above the one that we're looking at tonight. So that's what the agreement was for. Below all of that, the zoning is still in play for the site and, which is why you're seeing this tonight in terms of the variances. But as part of the subdivision, there were two covenants that were actually registered to the site, one being for overall landscaping for the site and one being for the siding and design of the site. So the design is still within the bailiwick of council to comment on and determine whether you're okay with that design. And then there's the variance piece that gets attached to the RS2 zoning, which is underlying everything.
So through you, Chair. I think that what that makes me think of is that in the future, I'm going to be a lot more careful when I look at the wording around some of those things because I, I mean, my, I understand exactly what you're saying and I understand how the process works. But for me, if someone comes with a subdivision attached to an HRA or something like that and then they're able to sell a lot off, I want to make sure that whatever it was that we agreed to when we made that decision is kind of followed through to the best of our ability on the other lots. Do you know what I mean? Like, I'm not saying that they're not following the rules here. I'm just saying that to me, it seems like there's certain things that perhaps were said to help us agree to have this HRA and this subdivision. And now I'm kind of going, oh, hang on a second. Maybe now they're saying they're going to take down six trees instead of four trees. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, in fact, you're commenting on the trees. You're right. At the time of the HRA, we were talking about the arbutus trees. And in fact, they would be removed as part of this development. In the grand scheme of the subdivision, those trees were being replanted, replaced, further up on the site. So as the road curves up, that selection of arbutus trees is to be planted elsewhere on the site. And through this particular design, the applicant is proposing to put additional arbutus trees on that site as well.
So if I may, through you, Chair, just have one more comment as far as the trees go because you just kind of went nicely into that for me. I know that in the staff report, it says that the number of trees being planted will generate an estimated canopy cover of 50% exceeding the 35% total. So what I would like to know, though, is, and it would be helpful for me if others might find this helpful as well, is that in the report, if it might say, you know, that canopy coverage will not be reached for 30 years. That canopy coverage will be reached in 10 years or something like that. If we can estimate that, because for me, that's really helpful, to say that eventually the canopy coverage will be 50%, well, you could say that eventually it's going to be 75% if nobody ever trimmed the trees or something. But, you know, like to say it's going to be 50% in 40 years is helpful to me because then it gives me an estimation of how long that site is going to be bare or going to take to get to that.
I think that is a question, actually, because I believe, is there a time window that you used for that measurement?
Yes. When we are receiving these applications, these are all reviewed by the Parks Department and through the Urban Forest Strategy, the schedules that are set in the Forest Strategy based on canopy cover for different species. They are looking at that canopy cover at a 10-year turnaround.
That's really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, I think Counselor Zelka hasn't spoken yet. I'll go back to Counselor Green.
Thank you so much, Chair. Through you to staff. Could you please clarify for something for me to building and planning? Are these variances related to RS4 or related to RS2?
RS2.
RS2. How is that possible since the Heritage revitalization agreement, the whole point of it with respect to facilitating this subdivision laid out each property, each lot, as if it was an RS4 property? Answer me that.
Ms. Jensen?
So a Heritage revitalization agreement itself cannot rezone a property. What it can do is vary components of a zoning bylaw or other bylaws that fall within the scope of the legislation. So through the HRA process, one of the schedules showed the variances that were attached to this site. So as I mentioned earlier, there was these setbacks and heights and so on for the existing heritage home. There were also variances to the lot area for each of the lots so that as if they were being treated as an RS4 zone.
So they are still technically an RS2 lot, but they are being treated as an RS4 lot? And as for the variances, those variances are the same, I believe, for RS2 and RS4 given the setback requirements?
No, there's actually a little bit of a difference. So in this particular...
Can you maybe add that difference?
Yeah. So in this particular instance, because of that exterior side lot line on this triangular lot, an RS4 exterior side would be 3.65 meters and RS2 zone is 7.65. So it's quite a difference between the two zones.
Counselor Zelka?
Thank you so much. So continuing. I actually don't really have a problem with the variance since it's primarily at the back and seems to be sympathetic to the, I'm calling it the rear side. Maybe it's like that's the front yard, where the front door is, with the front yard uphill. So I don't really have a problem with the variance. But speaking for myself, I do have a problem with the design. I do very much appreciate that the Heritage revitalization agreement, part of the win-win. And let me start with that first question. We do have an ability to not just pass comment, but potentially even vote this down based on simply the style of the house if we choose to, if we don't like it.
Council has to approve the siding and design.
Siding, well, we have to be in favor of it.
The majority of council has to vote in favor of...
The majority, yes. And if the majority of council doesn't like the design, then it doesn't proceed.
Correct.
And that was part of the win-win, I understand, through the Heritage revitalization agreement, allowing us that unusual, when I say unusual is that mostly for most first single-family homes, we don't have that, that say, other than in the uplands. And for unusual situations like this, that's true? Yes? Yes, thank you. So let me then sort of go on to the second point I wanted to say, after saying I don't have a problem with the variance. I do have a problem with the design. I also went back to the H Heritage revitalization agreement and some of the comments that were made there. In particular, and I see that they, some of them even came through in some of the correspondence with respect to comments of the commission members at the time, where they basically said that the new homes on this property must reflect the spirit of the heritage home. And then there's references in the correspondence that my folks can read with respect to the OCP suggestions on how this Heritage revitalization should be used with respect to the continuing of the win-win. So I heard the proponents say it's a humanist design. To my eye, to my non-architectural eye, it appears to be a brutalist design. And to my eye, this is not at all sympathetic to the Boyd residence. I see that it is rather, shall we say, sympathetic to the greater neighborhood of the properties downstream, downstreet one way and downstreet the other. But with respect to the Boyd residence and that property and the various other residences that'll be going in on, related to the Heritage revitalization agreement, I don't agree that it is sympathetic. So at this moment, I'm considering voting against this. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Green?
Yes, thank you. And following on the comments by Counselor Braithwaite and others, this is a teachable moment for all of us on what HRAs are about, Heritage revitalization agreements. I think the public's expectation is very different from the expectation of owners and architects and planners. And that's the way it is and that's reasonable. And I appreciate, Mr. DeBant, through you, Chair, that, you know, this design is sympathetic to the needs of the owner in particular, sympathetic to the landscape. But I think the public, or at least some of the public, expect a Heritage revitalization agreement to be just that, to revitalize the heritage potential of the property and the existing home. And it is a win-win. We do have, the Boyd home is being completely restored and it will be designated and saved. But I think this shows that tension between what the public expects and what actually happens. And I think around Heritage revitalization agreements, they're a very special tool and they're a good heritage tool.
they're, they're, they're a good heritage tool. But if, if we go too far down the road and start using them for other purposes that may, that may compromise the heritage value of, of a property, then I think we have to, you know, think about that. But I appreciate that, that you've done what is required and, and I understand the reasons for that. And I appreciate the input of the Planning Department as well. But I think, I agree with Counselor Braithwaite, that we have to be careful about the use of HRAs and, and that, that we don't get surprised at the end. Thank you.
Are there any, I'm just going to try and keep this to questions at this point, just so we can get some questions and comments from the audience as well. Is there any other clarification that the council wants to see at this point? Yeah, Counselor Patterson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Mayor. And through you, just on this and, and listening to some of the, the comments around the, the council table and particularly Counselor Green's last comments. It, I'm, I'm trying to understand, this is more of a question for staff, the process because the, the HRA goes to the Heritage Commission. And then, when, when this comes back, particularly in the format that it is presented in the, on the agenda for this meeting, the members of the Heritage Commission may or may not realize that there is something else that is, is being generated out of an application that they already saw. And so, how do we take that information back to them also out of this so that it is also, as we've said, a learning experience? Because I think a lot of the, the, the language that goes on when you're talking about the heritage applications is admirable at the time, but it may not be something that, that we are tied to down the road. And so, there may be a real benefit in this learning experience to somehow clarify these issues and also have a way of, of taking these back to the Heritage Commission. Because I, I think that their expectations would be more development that was on that site might again come under their purview because they were involved in the first application.
Thank you. I'm just going to ask the question of staff on terms of process. We have a, a pretty standardized process on these where we make recommendations to ourselves as, as council next week or some future meeting to approve or not approve. Are there options within our, our procedures system that we can refer these sorts of applications to other bodies or is it essentially just coming here?
Sorry. As you're aware, this application had gone through the Advisory Design Panel and it's their purview to review these. Of course, as it's been mentioned, the principles of Heritage Revitalization Agreements are brought forward to the Heritage Commission and they provide their recommendations and input. And then, staff proceeds with that development of those HRAs and bring them forward to council. So, I think we're using the committees and commissions as we should be with the different applications and processes we have.
Thank you very much. Any other questions of the applicant or of staff at this point? Not all, oh, Counselor Zelka?
I guess a question related to process. If we chose to refer this for comment of the Heritage Commission, is that something that's allowable at this stage of the process before we pass judgment on it?
I would deem that it probably is possible for us to do that, but I don't, certainly outside of our normal process for it. I, I think before we consider any change of process, we should listen to the public and then have a discussion here. Is there a, anybody from the audience who would like to speak to this application? Mr. Jones? Is there any? Okay. And there was a reticence for people to come forward. So, please come forward. Again, just state your name and municipality and turn on the microphone in front of you, please. Can you turn the microphone on just in front of you? Perfect. Thank you. It's on.
Okay. I would just reiterate what Counselor Zelka just said. I think that, you know, you are the people with the power. You could change the process right here and right now if you wished, if there was a motion on the floor that would allow you to do that. So, I would call on one of the counselors to put forward a motion. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience who wishes to speak? Please come forward. Welcome. Same process, just state your name and municipality.
Curtis Hobson, Oak Bay. I was present for the original discussion on the Heritage Revitalization Commission for, for this subdivision and thoroughly reviewed the report by the expert. And to me, the Boyd House didn't really need revitalization. It just needed like it, the deferred maintenance that hadn't been done for years needed to be fixed. And maybe the bad reno that it had could maybe be rectified. So, the proponent, of course, asked for a three lot subdivision to protect and restore the Boyd House. Again, the HRA process, I, I feel personally that it was misused in this case. The point of the HRA in my mind is to revitalize the heritage asset, which is the Boyd House. And to subdivide the existing two lots to create an additional three lots, that better be a really, really nice revitalization of the Boyd House because that is a very, very, those lots are expensive, is a lucrative and financial windfall, as I pointed out in past HRA applications. I'd also like to note that I don't think the Local Government Act was applied correctly regarding Parkland Act acquisition contributions. The Act states a subdivision of three or more lots. We were told that this didn't qualify for that because it was on two existing lots, but the Local Government Act makes no def, doesn't really define that. It just says three or more lots. This is a three or more lot subdivision. I also believe the word sensitive infill was thrown out during the presentation by the applicant and I personally don't feel this is sensitive infill. I understand the needs of the, the, the new owners. It's no longer abstract, I understand. But again, I don't think the HRAs are, are being applied properly in the municipality and I think they're being exploited. So, I would encourage you to, as Ms. Richardson said, change the process right here and now. And as Counselor Green said, this really is a learning experience for council. You know, four of you were up there and a few of you were in the audience when this went through. And I, I really do think the language in that needs to be, those HRAs needs, needs to be revisited to make sure that we're not here discussing things like this in the future. You know, the heritage, it's a Heritage Revitalization Agreement. The Heritage Committee really should be involved. I guess that's about it. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hobson. If Mr. Demant wishes to come forward, I'm happy to let him respond. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And through you, I, I guess what I would like to say on, on behalf of Ernie and Susan, and as was stated, they weren't part of the initial HRA application. What they did instead was buy a lot that had some wording around about how the design should respond to the context. And we've, we've tried to fulfill that. When I, when I look at that wording and I guess, to be fair to Ernie and Susan, you know, what it says is that having, having regard to the proximity of the proposed construction to property boundaries, adjoining or neighboring properties, the effect on the amenities, views, privacy of adjoining or neighboring properties, overall character of the neighborhood, these are the things that they understood they needed to respond to. That's what's written in the, in the HRA. Correct me if I'm wrong. So, we have done our best to make reference to the Boyd Home, to, to, to be sympathetic. But at the same time, we've been very careful and the design reflects our efforts to maintain the views of the existing residents who are above and behind the house and to deal with the needs of our, of our client. So, while I understand the concerns broadly in the broader context of some of the comments that have been made, I think to punish Ernie and Susan for fulfilling the, the wording of the HRA as they received it, I don't think would be appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. So, there's no intention to punish anybody here. We're just, I think, trying to find an, an appropriate process for, for this. Go ahead, Mr. Demant.
Sorry. I, I guess I, what I should have shared as well is that their desire was for a modern home. So, I guess, you know, this, to, to turn that back would be thwarting that. And then, yeah, punish is probably not the, the accurate word. Thank you for that correction. But I am thinking of their, of them and, and for their dream home, you know, what they thought, they, they thought they had found the right site for that. And I think we've worked and they've let us work pretty hard to, to make the whole thing balance out.
Okay. Thank you. You might as well just stay at that chair in case there's any other. Is there any other people who wish to come forward and speak to the application? I don't see anybody else. So, bring it back to this table now. We have a, we have the piece here. I have just a couple, I guess, one, one question for you. You mentioned that this is going to have a metal roof that, that the shimmeriness will sort of reflect. My observation of the metal roofs that you see sort of from the top of Trafalgar Park, they're looking down on that, is that they, they really stand out, that they kind of are, like they sort of, they take away from the natural piece and, and you mentioned the fact that it, that site looks like you're, there's no other houses around it when you're sitting at the top, it looks like that. Is there any consideration of that to not make that a shiny metal roof that, that, that gets the, the sun glare and maybe make it like a green roof or, or a, or a roof that blends into the environment more from above?
So, thank you and through you Chair again. The metal roof will not be like a bright silver metal roof. It'll be a more of a weathered zinc color. So, it won't, it, it will have, you know, some luster, but it, it, it won't, it won't, you know, shine with that kind of bright galvanized kind of shine. Green roofs on wood frame are very difficult. We did, we did contemplate that. That was, I share your idea that that was our first concept, but from a, a home warranty point of view and so on, they're, they're difficult to make work. That's why we went with the, with the metal roof as opposed to the other alternative, which is just a membrane, a membrane roof, which is that granulated kind of surface easy on commercial buildings.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so, back to this table. There, we need a motion on the table and maybe we can speak to that motion. Wow, it's a rush to make a motion here, as you tell. I, I can't make a motion, so...
I'll make the motion just because I think that we have to have further discussion. So, I'll, I'll make, move, make the motion.
This is the motion to, to recommend to council to approve the setting and design as laid out here? Yes, okay.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Okay. The motion is now, thank you for that, Counselor Braithwaite. I appreciate that. Is there any other further discussion? All right. I'll, I'll say my two bits on this one because I, I sort of weigh this into my, my pros and cons column of my, of my measure. I, I share a couple of concerns. One, it's hard to, it's hard to know from drawings how well it fits in the contextual basis of that site. My first take on it was that the very large front would be, would essentially block the view of the heritage house until you got right around to the driveway. I had some concerns about that. I recognize that just given the slope now, that that's actually going to be difficult to get around. It's gonna, it's gonna cause a blockage of that view almost no matter what design it has. However, it is fairly substantial. And the other concern I had is the roof. I don't, I think the shiny roofs are, are not conducive, but I, I'm not going to hold that one. On, on the plus side of this, having gone through the Heritage Conservation Area discussion and trying to find wording that define things allow, it's, you know, that isn't a good example of where you do set context. You allow modern designs that are sympathetic. And so, is this, I mean, that's a judgment of the beholder, the, the design panel, the, the staff seem to feel it is. It is, I would say it's a beautiful design. I love the, the design of the house. I think it's, it's quite spectacular. Whether it's suitable for the site, I guess, is probably ultimately the question that we have here, but I want to just make that comment. I just, I saw the design and thought, wow, that is a very impressive piece. And, and having an architecturally designed home is always a real plus to the community because we know that it's got some very unique value to it. I have no issue with the variances. I think that they're reasonable, understandable in the context of what you're asking for. And I do actually want to just say, I appreciate the fact that it's not, we had the earlier one on Beach Drive that was 8,000 some odd square feet pushed to the maximum size allowed on the lot. This is not 36% as opposed to the 40% allowed. It, it is not trying to be the biggest building in the world. It's trying to meet a need and I do appreciate that. So, those are sort of the pros and cons that I see for this application at this point. I'm, I'm listening to the wisdom of some of the other comments here, but I've, if there's no further conversation, I'll, I'll just call the question. But if there's any other comments, I'll, Counselor Zelka?
Thank you, Chair. So, I, I, I hear the, the, the overriding concern, at least for me, is around the contextual basis of this house and, and its location within a Heritage Revitalization Agreement process. I'd, I'd like to ask if it's possible, in fact, if, I'll move a motion to refer this application to the Heritage Commission, asking them to comment on the appropriateness of the contextual basis of this property, this style, in light of the Heritage Revitalization Agreement.
We have a mover? If there's no second or we'll leave it at that. Okay. So, we have the motion on the table though to, to move, make a recommendation to, to move it forward. There is an opportunity for more public input, so maybe a thing that I can maybe ask Ms. Patterson to do is just send her a note to the Heritage Commission to, to have any comments or suggestions prior to the next council meeting, that that be, those be come forward. It is an interesting question, this, this idea of process on that. I'm, I'm inclined to, to like that idea. On the other hand, I also know their expertise is not necessarily the interpretation of modern architecture within that context. So, are we getting better decision-making by doing that? I don't, I don't, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what the right answer to that is. But we have the motion in front of us now to make the recommendation to council. Is there any, Counselor Braithwaite?
Um, yeah. This is a really tough one for me. I have to be honest. I, I'm glad that you made your comments because it, it, it helps me kind of clarify in my mind what I'm going to do. But it is, it does beg the question as to where does, how do we as a council ensure that what our wishes were are going to be carried through? Because I think it's unfortunate that in this particular case that this process has gotten to this point. If people around the table are not feeling that this is something that was going to fit into this, to this site or what, what the expectation was for something for this site. I think that the applicant has followed what they perceived were the rules to the best of their ability. We, we did not stop them in any part of the process. You know, that, that, we could have at ADP. ADP had a chance to look at it. We could have at the staff level, like the staff level, if they, if they felt it wasn't appropriate, they could have stopped it as well. So, so it's unfortunate that that didn't happen along the way. I don't know if that's something that we as a council can, should now say, gosh, you didn't follow the rules as per what my, my interpretation is or your interpretation or your interpretation. I'm not sure if we can do that. But it's a very difficult situation, I think, because although I would agree that the design is a beautiful design, I'm unsure whether it's the right design for that spot. I'm, I don't know. I'm going to let Counselor Green say something now.
Counselor Green?
I won't say too much more, other than I do appreciate the fact that these owners were not part of the original HRA process, that they were not in the room when those decisions were made and, and I appreciate that and thank you very much for, for clarifying that, Mr. Demant. And I, I too think this is a wonderful home. And it does fit with the other homes along Beach Drive between McNeil Bay and the golf course on that side of the road. But what made it special in terms of this property was the idea of an HRA. And maybe that's where we need to clarify what our expectations are about HRAs and work with planning staff on, on some of, on some of those expectations. I think it is a process issue and question and I agree that, yes, we can change the process. I would like some time to think about how we do that and consult with... I would like some time to think about how we do that and consult with staff and with our senior staff as well. But generally speaking, this is not a question of punishing or blame or anything else. It's just, it is what it is. And I think we, perhaps some of us had a different expectation about what these houses might look like based on previous discussions. But I appreciate everyone's part in the process and I also appreciate the comments from the public. Thank you.
Just for clarification, if I may go back to staff. The place for council to create that clarity is within the wording of the covenant at the time of the HRA. Is that a fair statement? I mean, Mr. Demant did a good job of articulating what is written there and how that was interpreted. But that is the place for us. If you want more clarity, i.e. if you want to suggest design specific pieces, that would be the appropriate place in future to do that work. Is that correct?
If I may, I think it would be appropriate for staff and council to have a little bit more discussion about HRAs and the legislation that allows for those and what their intent is and how those relate to applications such as this, which, you know, an HRA sets out the principles of the heritage values that you want to protect. And those are essentially, there's a balance between that and, for example, the subdivision application. But, you know, you really need to look at what the legislation allows you to do in the context of heritage conservation and with heritage revitalization agreements. And, you know, I can tell you that there are limits on that. And there are limits on what you can say about the design of a house on a new lot that's in adjacency to a heritage building, but is not on a heritage property, landscape, et cetera. So I think we need to have, I think, a little bigger discussion about that. And I apologize for it being stated here, but I think it really, this evening certainly puts a point on that for me. Thank you.
Fair enough. No, I think that is a fair point. I guess my point was just, if, within that HRA context, I mean, the covenant is the place that controls anything to do with setting and designing. That would have to be agreed to by both the applicant and the council at the time of any kind of subdivision or any kind of piece. The covenant is really, because we don't normally have design control over, is that, is that fair?
Well, if I may, the covenant really just sends that application here as opposed to building permit review by staff. That's really what that tool does. It's actually the HRA and the agreement and the principles that are in there and based on the legislation that set that direction, if you will. And it's pretty clear. And I think our future conservation area will help us a great deal on understanding this as well.
Councilor Patterson?
Thank you. You know, the comments that I initially started with were really meant to highlight, this process is a little bit about managing expectations. I understand what the Director of Planning has said and he's correct in that. But that doesn't, that doesn't deter the members of the Heritage Commission, sometimes neighbors in that area from having an expectation that when the heritage revitalization application was, in fact, handled, that they had different visions in mind. And I like the design of the home and I can understand certainly where this type of design really benefits people with any mobility challenges. There's a lot of good things about it. I do like the fact that the roof is not cluttered with obstructions that are going to look bad for the other houses. So there are benefits to that. And in fact, if you weren't coming forward with this other variance, you wouldn't be here and nobody would find out until after the fact. And then we may or may not hear about it. So one element of this that also is elusive right now is because the area is still under development, we don't hear from neighbors that are in that strata. So we don't have that to rely on. But, you know, and I also am listening to Councilor Zelka's comments about it going back to heritage. And I thought about that, but really it's past their voice in this decision. And so I don't, they will have comments, but I, the new owners were not part of the heritage discussions. They weren't aware of it should something different take place so that all parties that enter into the agreements are made aware of everything and go into it knowingly. Perhaps that's still a different discussion. So, you know, I think the application is before us. I took a look at the lot today. It's a very challenging slope. It looks to be much smaller today with all of the boulders all over it. It doesn't look like you can put much of anything there. I do appreciate the house is not perhaps overly large for the lot. So there certainly are some good attributes to it should it go that close to the road. We don't have the neighbors to really give us their opinion on what that looks like. I don't know how appealing it is. And if other, the other homes in the lot do the same thing, you know, it's kind of cart and the horse. What do you, what follows? So I think it is a difficult decision, but it's one that we have to make at the council table tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Councilor Patterson? Councilor Braithwaite?
Just one other thing further to that is that it makes me wonder what's going to happen to the other two lots and how much control we're going to have over that. So that's, I think, something we need to keep in the back of our minds as well. But I wouldn't disagree with your comments on, it would be, I still think it would still be interesting to hear a little bit coming back from heritage. But for me, I'll be voting to move it forward to the next stage just to be able to hear more comments.
And I just want to, there was one comment made there, just so we're absolutely clear that it wouldn't be here if it wasn't a variance. It does come here. We do have in our process for it to come here even without a variance for a setting and design approval. So they're separate. Councilor Nadee, did you have something to say? Or you, I wasn't sure if there was a hand or not. I couldn't tell.
I don't really have anything to add. I mean, I appreciate the comments by Councilor Patterson about managing expectations. But overall, the, I mean, I don't have a problem with the variance that's being requested. It's gone through the ADP. They're the experts in design and they've complimented the design and said that it's, it's a well, overall a design that was well done and consistent with the neighborhood context. I have the same sense of that. So that seems fine. They've gone to a lot of trouble to up the number of trees on the property to cover up to 50%, which exceeded the 35% target that's expected. So, yeah, I think I'm fine with this going through and I appreciate the complications around expectations. But I think as it sits, it's a reasonable application and it fits with the overall context. So I'll be voting in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go to Councilor Appleton, because we haven't really heard, and then Councilor Zelka. I do want to get to the question here. Councilor Appleton?
Thank you, Chair. I won't belabor the point. I do appreciate the fulsome discussion around the table. So I do appreciate my colleagues' comments. I would be supportive of the application as it is, although I do want to make a point of indicating my support for the Director of Planning's comment to bring forth, you know, have a further discussion with council about the specifics of the HRA implementation and sort of the nuts and bolts. It seems like we get to the fine grains stuff with these particular types of submissions. So I would like to receive that information. And I think that that is also relevant. You know, I want to acknowledge the members of the public that have spoken to the intent of the HRA and what they see as the benefit of the HRA for the community. So I think that that would help us provide better information and clarity for citizens as well around how HRAs are intended to be used and how we see them being implemented to support the official community plan.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zelka, you have one more comment?
I do, yes. Thank you very much. I totally agree with the comments around managing expectations. And I do wish to compliment the architect and the owners. It is an absolutely lovely design. And I think in a, on a different lot, in a different part of Oak Bay, it would be entirely appropriate. And I would love to see it built. However, on this property with respect to the Boyd residence, I'm afraid I cannot support it because of the HRA and because of what I understood with respect to my expectations of what was going to be for those three additional lots and four lots in total versus the two relating to the win-win. I wanted to comment also that it's unfortunate that the owners appear to have a misunderstanding about the heritage revitalization aspect. It's great that, that I heard the proponents indicated that they have a desire for a modern home. And yet, the aspect of the heritage revitalization allowed us to pass comment and pass judgment on the design controls as the final arbiter as to whether they can or cannot have a modern home or not, unlike any other place in Oak Bay other than Uplands. And it's unfortunate that the owners weren't aware of this. And I certainly encourage them to go back to whoever sold them that property since it sounds like the reliability, if there is any, rests there and certainly not at this table. Since we've been, it seems to me we've been fairly clear, at least in the public record, as to what the expectations reasonably were with respect to these three lots plus the Boyd residence. So I'm afraid I cannot support this moving forward and I'll be voting against. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zelka. Seeing any other discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? When opposed, Councilor Zelka. Thank you. That brings us to the conclusion of the land use process. And now we get on to the, I think it's the fun stuff, which is the, not the respectful workplace, but the strategic planning piece. You want five, like five minutes just to?
Respectfully, Your Worship, if we could have a five-minute recess for the gallery who's staying for the strategic planning. We have some handouts. So a five-minute break would be greatly appreciated.
For those who didn't hear that, if people wish to stay for the strategic planning process, we will, we have some handouts that are available to help let you share some of the harder to read pieces. So we'll reconvene in five minutes. That is 9:06. We'll invite people back to the table here about, say, 20 seconds and we'll get going. All right, we'll just wait one more minute here before Councilor Zelka to get back. All right, well, we'll kick this off. And I'm about to hand this over to Ms. Varela, who's going to guide us through this process via PowerPoint. And I just want to take a moment at the beginning to thank the staff for doing this, for trying to find a guided discussion. It's, it's, it's an interesting process trying to distill broad ideas down into narrow ones. So I do appreciate this, the visual tools and everything else being brought forward. So without further ado, Ms. Varela, I want to kick off item number five on our agenda.
Thank you, Your Worship. So this is the second meeting in the strategic planning process. Really, when we talked about where we've come from in this process, previous council had identified six strategic objectives, some good comment in there. And we put in projects and initiatives behind those six bubbles, if you will. This council has actually indicated they would like a more fulsome plan that includes a variety of things. So from our last meeting, council talked about their new directive, which was really the OCP, which would, they'd like to see filter into those strategic priorities. And then staff would bring some initiatives behind that. So we had talked about, and for the gallery, that the OCP vision statement is actually the first page of the handout. And there's a lot in the OCP. Knowing that, on December 30, Knowing that, on December 3rd, we had had a high-level discussion with council to say, would you agree to a three-pronged approach? So one was more of that philosophy piece, which would round out your strategic plan. We talked about the financial information, the scope of projects and council term deliverables to inform that plan and the five-year financial plan. And then we talked about another component, which is the annual report and metrics. So how we're measuring. The thing with strategic plans is they can range in complexity. So there are some really good examples of plans that could be considered more simple, if you will, in composition. There's some great examples on the island from Comox and Sydney over to communities that are more complex and comprehensive. They have dedicated staff, they have significant budget. Sanich is a good example of those. And those plans, the ones on that end of the spectrum, really evolve over years. And I think for Oak Bay, having a plan that's actually a document is a good step forward for you. So when we talked about council's hopes for this process, staff heard very clearly that you wanted your strategic priorities linked to the official community plan. And that's because you recognize a lot of public engagement and community visioning went into that process. That's really where the community got to articulate its hopes and dreams for how Oak Bay would eventually be described. And if you look at the OCP, we have a vision statement, we have 13 goals, we have over 175 policies. Deb and I counted 177, but we gave ourselves an out in case we miscounted. And we have an implementation section with 19 items. So that's a lot for council to tackle. In addition to that, there's other things that's going to influence your decision-making. And that would include council delegations, best practices, certainly staff's going to talk to you about that, council discussions that you've had to date. So right from our orientation sessions to, you know, your aspirations when you were campaigning, we heard some clear messages there. Your advisory bodies, as we've heard tonight, are going to weigh in. Operational requirements, again, staff. You have a citizen satisfaction survey, and while it's a few years old, it's still a really valuable tool for more of that public input. And we have other plans and policies. For example, asset management, you have a strategy, things like that, and staff's going to talk to you a bit about that. So when we look at what we're hoping to achieve tonight, it's really the idea of can we get council direction on those larger umbrellas? So based on the discussions that we've had to date, informally, we've heard some strong messages, housing, infrastructure, optimization of processes. Then there's, there's a lot of other stuff that, that the district has to deal with and that you might want to slot some initiatives under, such as things that would fall into the purview of the Parks and Rec Commission, things like that. So moving forward, we know we have a workshop coming up on Thursday for asset management because our other commitment is we really want to build a common knowledge base for yourselves, staff, the public, because it allows us then to foster a more robust and informed discussion about the things that matter to you and to the community. So Thursday, asset management. Tuesday, we're going to have a housing discussion. And then we're going to go into talking about those initiatives, which is going to be February 13th. Once council gives that high-level direction for initiatives, those are then referred to the estimates meetings. Okay? Out of those, that'll filter into your budget and financial plan. We have a legislated deadline of May 15th for that. And then you're going to see a corporate strategic plan document. You're going to see your 2018 annual report. And again, we'll have a more robust discussion about that. And departmental work plans will be formed that reflect your implementation process. So based on the discussions and to frame up your decision-making, staff has brought forward these for your consideration. And for the benefit of the public in the gallery, this slide is also in your handout because it can be a little difficult to read. But to date, our thoughts are that council wants to ensure access to diverse housing options. They want to achieve sustainable service delivery. They want to provide service excellence. And they want to enhance and promote quality of life and sense of place in Oak Bay. And when we sent this out to you, and again, the worksheet is provided in the package so the public can see and, and may even use this kind of tool to say, what do they think about what is being proposed to date? So if council wants to achieve those four high-level objectives, then you could consider the larger priority, which adds a bit of a, how are you going to do those things? So would council want to ensure access to diverse housing options within the built environment, which reflects the unique character of Oak Bay's neighborhoods and village centers by reviewing and planning for community needs? And again, those are those big umbrellas. If these are workable for council, these may survive one or two reviews as you work through your term. Because there's a lot of different ways, a lot of different initiatives you could slot under these priorities to achieve what you want to achieve within the capacity and budget of the organization. If council wants to achieve sustainable service delivery, and this really relates to that infrastructure and asset management piece, you may do that through an asset management program that is integrated with a long-term financial plan. Provide service excellence, you would do that by optimizing operational effectiveness and fostering public engagement. And you would enhance and promote Oak Bay's quality of life and sense of place by stewarding the community's history, landscape, culture, and amenities within the context of southern Vancouver Island. One of the things when we were talking about putting this presentation together was that idea of the context. So whether it was within the Capital Regional District or with, was it, whether it was in southern Vancouver Island, previous councils recognized the importance of working with your neighbors. So there's a lot of, there's shared services, there's emergency management, there's things that cross boundaries. There's a lot of things that could slot under here. You could do something with tourism, you could do something with economic development. Again, really broad, high-level priorities, the council gets to choose how to implement. If we go down to the last row of the chart, these are the OCP goals, and there are also some other corporate goals. So instead of just OCP goals, we looked at them as, in terms of a more broader topic of corporate goals. So the first ones, neighborhoods, built environment, and housing would all slot under your one priority. Those are all out of the OCP. Transportation, utilities, and services, both of those are out of the OCP. And facilities management is something that staff are recommending that we add under that strategic priority, if that's what council chooses to do. The next one, optimizing systems, processes, and practices. And that's a pretty, pretty broad range, but you could talk about looking at some of your processes for land use applications, you could talk about bylaws, you could talk about public engagement. And you could also talk about public safety. I know the senior management team got together and, and batted these around a bit, and there was some really good input from them. And this is a win for, for Ray Bernaties. To enhance and promote quality of life and sense of place, this one was a really big catch-all, but there's a lot of really great stuff in the OCP, and all of these are directly out of there. So if they count the round dots, those are those 13 OCP goals. And the more arrow-like ones are additional recommendations that we've included as categories you may want to consider. So you've had a worksheet handed out to you. Really, this is, this is to provide a starting place for council's discussion. We don't want to presuppose we know what your strategic priorities are. This is a best guess. One of the other instructions that we got from you is that you'd rather have shorter, well-facilitated meetings rather than those long, day-long workshops. And so part of us hoping to achieve this is saying, this is a starting place for your discussion. It certainly is not to presuppose that staff knows what council wants to achieve in its So there's your workshop. Comments? I know, I know you folks will have done your homework. So at this time, I'd like to hand that back to his worship to see if there's discussion around the table to say, how do we do with hitting the mark? Is there wordsmithing to be done? Are there additional priorities that you'd like to see? Over to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Varela. That's, I appreciate the efforts to kind of show us our existing division in the OCP and, and, and give us a framework for discussion. It's always hard to, sometimes it's hard to kind of, when you're talking about these nebulous ideas, to kind of contain it. So I, I think you've done a nice job to give us some, some framework for this discussion. And there was, I, I'm not going to start off the conversation. I think I'm quite happy to let, to let council do that. The only thing I would probably just add in here is a, in one of our goals here is really something we started last term that was somewhat central, but needs to really continue, is the whole engagement of First Nations in our, in our processes and our discussions. So that's probably under item, column four, just to make sure that's, that's included in that.
It's a great one.
It's interesting, it's sort of embedded itself already into, into, into internal processes, but I think that's probably one that we probably have to flag here as well just for recognition. I'll, I don't know how many particular order here. Councilor Green, you got your hand up first, so I'll, I'll, I'll go to your, I'll go to you, and then maybe I'll just go around the table if that's, if that's good.
Well, first of all, through you, Mayor, to Ms. Varela, thank you very much for a very helpful document. This, this is incredibly helpful, especially for someone who is coming back to this table after many years of absence. And my concerns previously were that there were just far too many things on a laundry list that would never be accomplished. And so I think this helps to really focus not only our, our discussion, but how much we want to achieve in, in a four-year term. So thank you. And the only one I added to my own notes was, you had a column, other identified priorities, and the only one I really added was to develop and implement a strategic communications plan for all major programs, initiatives, and projects. And that is, that's from the public engagement activity that I believe the previous council already made a commitment to through a public engagement report. So I'm, I really believe this is important and that strategic communication is important because it's a way of sharing meaningful information with our community. So that was my only addition, and others may have other things as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Green. I'm going to go to, if you don't mind, to Councilor Appleton next.
Through you, Chair, thank you. And, and similar thanks to staff and Ms. Varela for providing this excellent information to start off the discussion with. In terms of the four priorities that are presented here, I am in pretty broad agreement with all of those four. I would submit to council, and I'm going to encourage my, my, my council colleagues to give me their opinion on this. I have a suggestion for an additional priority that's significant to me in specific. And I would like to propose that we also include a priority item for the consideration of sustainability in all municipal operations. And when I say that, I, I don't mean exclusively environmental sustainability, but I do feel that we, as a community, have a, a specific focus. My justification for this is that we, as, as a community, place a high value on environmental values, our foreshore, our trees, flora and fauna, and that the choices that we make as a local government have a profound impact on sustainability, both locally and regionally, how we choose to move people around, how we choose to house people. The design and the layout of our community is important to sustainability and has an impact on those things. And also, we as, as a group, being responsible for the community and the community of the future, we need to consider the effects of things like climate change on the community over the next several decades and how that's going to affect municipal operations moving forward. There's significant impacts from sea level rise, from weather events, these types of things need to be considered. I think we need to ensure that we are, we're facing up to that challenge immediately and not kicking it down the road. All of our municipal facilities, our parks and infrastructure will all be affected by those things. So I would invite discussion and invite my colleagues' input on considering adding a priority item of ensuring the sustainability lens is applied to municipal operations.
Thank you, Councilor Appleton. And seeing how broadly you define that, this, I think, my, my read of the community has been, over my entire existence on council, how, what a strong sense of ownership this community has for our community and for the broader region, just in terms of wanting to be stewards of it for the long term. So I, I think that fits very nicely into that, into that piece. Thank you for that. Councilor Braithwaite? I'm just going to go around the table here, I think, keep it simple.
Thanks. I don't have a ton to add. Thank you for mentioning the First Nations, I had that on my list as well. And interesting to hear about the sustainability lens, I think that's something that we, that we should look at. I also would like to consider us adding a youth lens in here somehow, because I think that to bring the youth to the table in some of these things that we're discussing would be really, really helpful. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Neay?
I, I don't, I thank you, staff, for pulling this together. I, I find it good. I, I fully agree with everybody's comment. My big one was around sustainability as well and how we get that infused into every aspect of the operation immediately because we're, it's just, it's, it's a priority. So whether it's in a separate priority or it gets integrated into the other ones, it's not troubling for me, but I do appreciate you bringing that up, Councilor Appleton. So other than that, I, I, I agree with all the comments made so far, so I don't have anything to add.
Thank you. Councilor Patterson?
Thank you. Good comments around the table, and I think a lot of, I've got more checks now because some of the, some of the comments we shared. I guess in looking at this, also, what I did was, because the OCP is, is our vision statement, which is great, but we don't really have a, I didn't find a mission statement anywhere. So going back to what I can fall back on is a mission, mission statement, you go back to the community charter, and it basically tells us what our purposes are. And I think what it did was emphasized what a great job Ms. Varela did on this document because it was providing for good government of its community, providing for services, laws, and other matters for community benefit, providing for stewardship of the public assets of its community, and fostering the economic, social, and environmental well-being of the community. So I think that we can safely say we have most of those items checked off on this document, which is great. The one thing that I would hope we could add to the document is just where we have put the categories in, if we could also align them with perhaps a number of sections of the OCP. And that will bring me to the one thing that I wanted to add on to all of the other great things that the members of the council table have added, and that is actually OCP monitoring and evaluation. Because it is the basic document, but at what intervals do we, do we go back, review it, update it, look at new legislation, which might, may or may not affect it? And, and evaluating that document itself because it really is our vision statement, and that's not something that remains the same over time. It changes and has to be flexible. So one thing, if we, we could somehow capture that into one of those wonderful categories, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Zelka?
Thank you, Chair. It's made it easy for me to go last. So yes, through everything I've heard, although we don't want to have a list of 20 number-one priorities. So I appreciate the fact that it's been packaged into a relatively small So I appreciate the fact that it's been packaged into a relatively smaller number. Uh, very, very helpful. Um, possibly as part of what's being described as the, as the first um, priority might, might be something that was touched on by many of us during the election with respect to making our bylaws a little more consistent, a little more clear, a little more alignment with the OCP. And uh, all those um, um, what do they call the uh, the uh, the action plans towards the end of the OCP that talk about how, all the work we need, we, we still need to do. Um, except it seems to me that as we're working our way through those uh, that multi-years of, of effort, at some point, we're gonna have to redo our OCP, but maybe not this year. Um, but uh, so just as we get alignment, aligned with, with that document, we'll need to redo it. So um, but at least we have to try. So somewhere, I, I'm, I'm getting that, that alignment and that will no doubt make things more, uh, you know, tie in with the, what's referred to as priority three, making uh, with respect to service excellence and making things more efficient and effective. And potentially uh, shorter meetings for us up here since uh, ideally policies will be going along with those uh, new bylaws or updated bylaws. Uh, the, the province, um, as long as it doesn't fall in the next month, uh, is asking us to do a housing needs report uh, that, uh, that, that we called last year, made reference to uh, the housing strategies. So it looks like we're finally gonna get our housing strategies because the province is forcing us to do it. So I don't know where that's gonna fit in there, but maybe, maybe related to, to number one, uh, touching on, on the housing options. Um, so uh, obviously we have to be responsive to what province is asking us to do regardless of who they are. Uh, I, I appreciate the comments made with respect to the, the annual report. I would love to see it, um, more meaningful numbers with respect to um, uh, analytics, uh, measures, um, uh, to make it much more easier for members of the gallery, members of the public. Um, and then four years from now, when all of us are gonna run again, we can say, hey, according to this annual report, look what a great job we did. Uh, so um, it'll be up to staff to make us look good or ideally us, up to us, I should say, the decisions we make here that help to direct staff to make those numbers look good, whether we use them or not is up to us. So um, uh, uh, somehow figuring out how to make the annual report, um, I don't necessarily need to win an award, but, but many of our um, nearby um, fellow uh, cities, towns and, and districts are, are winning lots of awards that we're not. Not that we need to, but maybe we could learn from them with respect to some aspects of service excellence. Uh, the last thing I want to touch on, um, uh, extending the, the, the excellent idea about sustainability, uh, beyond just the environmental. Emergency management is touching on a little bit more than just managing emergencies. It's not just a response. Um, there's a lot of, of work with respect to disaster mitigation. Um, in fact, there's even money available from the province and the feds around disaster mitigation uh, to get things in place because we know in twenty, thirty, forty years, um, with respect to uh, uh, areas, possibly uh, the, the, the middle of Windsor Park might be a touch underwater, I'm not sure. We'll have to see what, what happens with respect to, to, to sea, sea level rise. Uh, but I do recall that a corner of Windsor Park was a bit marshy until uh, in the, in the time of, of our mayor's grandfather's time. Um, uh, God forbid it becomes marshy again. Uh, but we, we might want to consider putting a dike up, who knows? Uh, we'll have to see what, uh, what, what is, what we need to put in place to mitigate.
We're not adding dike to strategic priorities, I'm just making this clear.
We are definitely not, but we may need to plan for these things. Uh, and the way you plan for it is by getting the grants that I know are available to think about thirty, forty, fifty years ahead. Is that the last thing? Gosh, there's so much. Yes, so I, hopefully uh, I'm, I'm not making the list uh, too long, but uh, those are some things I'd love to see. Um, when, when um, staff was speaking about providing service excellence, I thought of Tempest. And Tempest has that web component to allow the public to optimize their service delivery without having to call staff. They can just go to the website and see what's going on with that building permit next door on the website. That would be excellent. Not that I'd wanna go down to that level of detail, but man, that would make me happy. Thank you.
Of course, you don't want to go to that level of detail, however, yes, we still will. Um, thank you, thank you, Counselors Zelka. Um, I, I don't have a lot else to add to, I think, what was said here. I, I'm in my head doing the digging around and categorizing what's a, what's a, what's a priority, what's a goal. Um, I think there's a, a couple of things that, that twigged my mind, uh, that were said here that I didn't have down, but made me think. The communications piece, I think we have it, we're talking a lot about the financial management, but that, that cycle of getting the, the financial, you know, planning done and then the reporting out uh, piece, which we've talked about, I think is a really critical one. And, and um, so I think it, it touched all kinds of things, but that's a really big one, I think, that ties to one of the, the other priorities here. Um, I think it's important for us early, if people are in agreement, to kind of recognize what we're trying to get done in the next three years. Um, and the pieces that we're trying to tie to that are broader pieces, right? I, obviously things like sustainability, I think deserve to be at the top level because there are obviously things that we would want to see contained and influence the other pieces. Um, but within that, there's gonna be some project-type pieces that we want to actually decide as a council. There's no right answer as to which are the key things, but I think we, it deserves some action on those and I think that's important for us to kind of tease out a little bit. And I, I think under the, the sustainable service delivery piece, we've had a lot of talk about um, uh, just that whole financing piece. And I, I think again, just sort of that multi-year capital plan, um, that we've talked about in other pieces, not, not here, I think they kind of, but they're probably in that goal piece, the kind of that we're working towards is having those capital projects mapped out over the, over the longer term, uh, and minimizing those lifetime costs of, of capital. And I have other little specific pieces, but I think that's great. I really appreciate the, the feedback given by, by this group. So just so I'm, what, we're all very clear about the intent here. We're, we're trying to give some feedback to staff to kind of take this away and, and kind of tease it out a little bit, make sure that we're kind of slotting things in. Uh, ultimately, this is going to come back to us with that Gantt chart of timelines and a work plan. That is the goal, correct? So that, that when we say, yes, we do want to do a dike, uh, that, that there's a timeline attached that deliverable so that we're measured against those, those, all of us, council and staff are measured against achieving those goals. Is that, that is the intent of this strategic planning process? I want to make sure we're clear on that.
So on February thirteenth, um, we'll be providing a Gantt chart of sorts, um, that shows the uh, years a project is proposed for, that order of magnitude costing. Um, because if it's a lot of work for staff to get that costing, if you want a really refined costing, you're probably going to want to commit to sending that item to estimates. Um, again, uh, staff doesn't want to throw darts into the dart guessing what you want us to go work on, so we're gonna ask those questions and get those decisions out of you uh, on the thirteenth. Um, so it will have the, uh, as mentioned previously, it will have the, the department lead, it will have the proposed timeline, uh, and it will have costing. And then it'll be referred to the estimates, um, where you may want to talk a bit about risk, uh, things like that. So we'll have a more robust discussion. And again, February thirteenth is for new initiatives that are not currently proposed in the five-year financial plan, with an eye to this process being a step towards more closely aligning the processes of budget and strategic planning. You're not gonna get there this year, um, but it's a good step in the right direction and every year, uh, you're, you're aiming for more progress. Did that answer your question, your worship?
And I think just for the benefit of the audience who have interest in this, uh, the, the February thirteenth is sort of the catch-all for all, all of the aspects. Uh, we are having uh, some guided discussion pieces specifically around asset management and the financial piece. And then a second one on housing and those are coming up shortly, this Thursday and the following Tuesday. Uh, those will be those two discussions and we're gonna have those, uh, those meetings and, and we invite the public to come to those as well. And that's where we're gonna kind of break out some of the details on what we're actually expectations are for things like the housing and the finances and the asset management. So, um, are there any other comments from this table at this point or, and then I'll go to the public to come and, and, and make some comments? Counselor Green?
Um, just very quickly, and thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess I have three aspirational goals. You don't have to write these down. Um, but one is that we don't lose our momentum this term, um, that we're not bogged down by inertia, that, that we don't try and take on too much and then not, not be able to achieve what we want to achieve. And I think um, that's important and that we, we talked about managing expectations on that last land use application. I think this will be our biggest challenge because there were a lot of expectations going into this last election. And um, I, I think we have to be realistic and that's why we need to be very transparent and open with sharing information with, with our public. So those are aspirational, they're not, you know, meant to be part of the plan, but I, I would like, I will be keeping them in mind for myself and I, I'm happy to share them with everybody else, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Green. Uh, seeing nothing else, I'll invite members of the public to come forward who wish to speak to any of the aspects that we're talking about today. Chairs are open. And our process is the same as it was for all the other pieces, if you could just state your name, uh, and just, you know, if you can write it down as well, so we have a, a correct spelling for the minutes.
Right, my name's Wayne Todd, I live in Oak Bay.
Welcome, Mr. Todd.
And when I read the, uh, what you're putting out, uh, for strategic planning, I think one, one thing you should maybe give real priority to is this housing business because there's so much acrimony going on in the neighborhoods over this issue that um, I think if we got a clear sense of where you folks are uh, coming from, it might, the two things that I thought when I went through the OCP was, two big themes was um, moderate growth and respect for neighborhoods. And I think if more, if the developers uh, went with that, you would have hardly any of these uh, big conflicts that we're having in, in the community right now. So I think that would probably be a good idea to give as a priority. So when I read your minutes, I thought, wow, we're starting to get towards this housing strategy that we were talking about in the OCP.
Right.
I think that's a very important one. I just thought I'd, uh, you know, bring that to your attention, what I think is uh, or what a lot of people think is uh, important.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. And I think that's the reason that it's being sort of separated out for us to actually spend the, the time on the strategic planning on that piece, because I think we do recognize that as a very critical piece. Thank you. Uh, anybody else wish to come forward? Welcome, Mr. Back, Mr. Hobson?
Thanks.
Just wanted to just say your name aloud again.
Also Curtis Hobson, Oak Bay.
Thank you.
Uh, one thing I just wanted to suggest and maybe uh, it's, it's maybe implied but not explicit in this page here, um, there needs to be arrows going horizontally as well, because the way it kind of looks like, it's almost like they're in silos. So uh, when we look at uh, housing, neighborhoods, built environment, I mean, that's really connected to utilities and service and our infrastructure and, which is connected to uh, optimized systems, processes and practices. And of course, it all connects to the, our quality of life. So uh, I would just hope that there is some acknowledgement that uh, everything within the municipality, uh, while it might not seem connected, is connected. And so uh, you know, I hope you consider that, that these things don't get siloed off. Thanks.
No, thank you, good comment. One advantage of being, the next person, anybody else would like to come forward, please do. I'll just make a comment while I do, while you come forward, is that I think one of the advantages we have being a fairly small municipality with a reasonably small staff is it's hard to go anywhere without bumping into your peers here. So there's a lot of cross-pollination that happens naturally, but it's good for us to remember that. Welcome.
Yes, it is on Andrew Stinson, Oak Bay. And I want to say exactly the opposite from what Curtis said, unfortunately. I don't, and I'm not suggesting that everything should be siloed separately and they must be considered completely independently of each other. But when I look through the, the four silos or strategic priorities that we have, I, I think the first three are very focused and the fourth one feels kind of like a catch-all. It feels like it's, everything else is put into there. It's like that part on the website where you have so many policies, you don't have a nice little spot to put it in. Um, so I think one thing that you could do, and it kind of uh, ties into what Counselor Appleton was talking about, is make a fifth one and kind of take out the portions on climate chain, change in energy, uh, natural environment and parks and open spaces and make one that's specifically about the environment. That makes, I think, more focused areas instead of having one that's kind of everything and then three uh, kind of less, three more focused ones. So I, it is more of a structure thing, it's not this priority's good, this priority's bad, but I think you could reorganize it a bit to make it a little bit more focused.
Thank you. We have the power of adding boxes in PowerPoint, it's fantastic, yeah. Uh, anybody else like to come forward and speak to us at this time? I'll ask again, just because some people are shy. Anybody else want to come forward? All right? No? Uh, we will then uh, bring it back to this table. And I, I'll just turn to Ms. Varela, you've, you've heard some comments here and ideas. Uh, do you have sufficient, you know, feedback here to kind of go away and develop a, a document to kind of take to, to next, to this Thursday?
Uh, thank you, your worship. So staff is very appreciative of the comments, both from council and from the gallery. Uh, the visuals provided tonight were really to foster conversation around choosing your priorities, but I think there's just some really great insights there for when this kind of visual product is adapted to put into your corporate strategic plan. So uh, great feedback and input there. Um, so my takeaways tonight would, uh, and I'm just gonna run through my list just to make sure I capture it. So I want to add a goal under four, which is to specifically acknowledge engagement of First Nations. Um, one of the things, uh, Counselor Green, I'm wondering if you would consider is, instead of a standalone strategic priority regarding the communications plan, if we slot that in as a possible goal under uh, strategic priority three?
Three, service excellence.
Thank you. Um, okay. Um, uh, we've been instructed to add a uh, fifth priority, which is linked to sustainability and applying that lens to Oak Bay operations. Um, we'll, we'll do that. Uh, we want to add youth engagement uh, as a goal and I think we can slot that in very easily. Um, Counselor Patterson, thank you for pointing out the idea of the mission, of the mission statement out of the community charter. Um, certainly if this isn't the year to uh, spend a lot of time on the philosophy component, that is what the more um, simple or basic plans are doing is they're really just using their vision statement out of the OCP and that mission statement out of the charter is a great starting point. So thank you for pointing that out. Uh, we'll take your suggestions, add the numbered sections of the OCP to the goals. Uh, we're gonna slot in OCP monitoring and evaluation as another goal for council to consider in the final draft. Um, we'll make sure we emphasize that idea of reviewing plans, bylaws, uh, and processes with an eye to service excellence. Um, and I really liked the aspirational piece that Counselor Green provided and I'm, I'm thinking that uh, council may want to uh, consider doing something like that when you actually get to considering the actual plan document. So uh, thank you, great discussion tonight. Uh, and that's probably it from staff for this stage.
Thank you. Uh, just may I ask one more piece? Could we, because we're, we have a very focused next meeting on terms of, uh, next one's asset management, right? Correct?
Uh, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, your worship.
Uh, so it may be worth just spending five minutes at the beginning of that, just to kind of cycle back with the draft of this, so we can give some additional feedbacks. We're not kind of waiting till the very end to kind of do that little bit of iterative piece, if that's possible. And I do want to point out to everybody as well, the, the calendar that was put together by staff, trying to just make it as clear as possible when all of these meetings are coming up, uh, including the estimates meetings, which is where ultimately, uh, nothing we decide makes any difference at all until we put money to it. So uh, that is actually where the rubber hits the road, literally, in some cases. So um, that just, if people are looking for that, that's a great source of information. I really, really appreciate you doing that and adding the symbols to Counselor Zelka's very wise comment, so. Um, all right, with that, I think we're just motion to adjourn. Move adjournment?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, opposed, non-opposed? Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. Oh, uh, Ms. Varela, just to confirm, the meeting on Thursday starts at six, is that correct?
Yes, your worship. Uh, Thursday's meeting starts uh, six, ideally two hours, and then we'll be looking at the housing workshop on Tuesday, January twenty-ninth, being from seven till nine.
Seven to nine, perfect, thank you.